Like to call to order this town council committee of the whole regular meeting. Councillors present Bordelon, Baumgartner, Franco, Melendez, Aubrey and Zepary. Councillor Heed is at work this evening and will join us after his work commitment is completed. And Councillor Parker is, she has quite an honor this evening. She was invited to attend a seminar panel discussion called When Black Women Lead by the Lieutenant Governor. So she is at that event this evening. Calendar and Communications, Councillor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report other than I sent a correspondence over to the town manager regarding intersection Route 649, the intersection of Boquonic and Rainville. It's a funny little intersection because it's technically on the town and city line, but if you're looking to make a left-hand turn, in some cases you have to wait two and a half minutes. So a resident reached out to me and Manager Burt was offered to reach out to DOT on our behalf. So thank you, Manager Burt for that follow-up and providing assistance to our resident who would like to see potentially that wait time go down considerably. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Franco.
Thank you. I really don't have anything to report. I haven't participated in any meetings this week. It's been very busy on the personal front, although I did read in the Groton Patch that 11.32% of Groton residents are vaccinated with at least their first shot from COVID. So that is really good news to hear and hopefully we can keep progressing quickly. Possibly vaccines coming quicker. That would be nice. And I have participated in a Ledge Light Health District Vaccination Clinic because I work in the medical field. And I can tell you, I thought it was a great experience. They were full of volunteers helping people in our community and they were very organized. It was safe. It was very efficient and quick and I don't have enough nice things to say about how well it went. And I thought it was just wonderful. And I know people are a little aggravated that they haven't been able to sign up for their shot and or maybe to get one locally. And I understand the frustrations and hopefully in the near future, things will be able to open up a little bit quicker. Thank you.
Councillor Aubrey. You're muted, Councillor Aubrey?
Probably better when I'm muted. Anyways, I happily have had my second shot. It was very well-handed by CBS. So very happy that I have two Pfizer shots on me in me. So if I have a problem, cash in my stock.
Councillor Bordelon.
Thank you. First, I just want to say that I attended a Task Force Fields meeting last week. A lot of discussion went around. I just want to thank Senator Summers for attending, Representative Chris Connolly and Representative Joe Dela Cruz. They brought in a lot of insight and information that was very helpful and useful. And so really appreciate them coming out and being able to be a voice to help guide and give us some ideas, direction. And so that was very helpful. One of the last meetings I had asked, with it being Black History Month as it's slowly coming to an end here on the 23rd, I felt it was important to have something done for the town. I know there are things that are being done in small groups around, let it be the library or the DEI Committee. But I had asked if there's anything that we could do from a council and so nicely that this was presented. So I was asked if I could read it tonight and it will be eventually part of the meeting next Tuesday. So it says, "The Office of the Mayor, Town of Groton, Groton, Connecticut, proclamation, proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment of the 1915 of the Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the 2021 national theme for the observance is the black family. Representation, identity and diversity and emphasizes the movement of people of African American descent to new destinations and subsequently to new social realities. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build the society that lives up to its democratic ideas, ideals. And whereas the Town of Groton continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens' past, present and future are represented and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country and the world. And whereas the Town of Groton is proud to honor the history and contributions of African Americans in our community throughout our state, our nation. Now there be it resolved in recognition of African Americans in our community, past, present. The Groton Town Council does hereby proclaim February 2021 to be the Black History Month and encourages all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue the efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful and prosperous for all. Dated at Groton, Connecticut, this first day of February 2021, Patrice Gennettowski, Mayor, Town of Groton." So I think that's a great thing to recognize moving forward. I hope something like this would continue. I have spoke with the mayor about maybe starting something earlier next year. I have seen other towns take a day and recognize and have celebrations. Seems far-fetched as we're in the midst of COVID, but looking at ways that we can maybe celebrate our town hall, maybe hang up a Black History, honoring Black History flag at our town hall or celebration of music. These are just ideas. Nothing has been obviously decided, but moving forward next year, I look to establish a day that we, we as a town come together and call it a celebration, maybe an outdoor concert or such. I have seen it done where drummers have come and dancers and it can be really a great event and maybe have something with the high school, with the arts program up there and the music program. Maybe have a high schooler or a middle schooler or perhaps even elementary school. Maybe submit a drawing that can be used to be part of a banner in honoring Black History Month. So maybe a collaborative effort. So but thank you for doing that. I think this is a great start moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for reading and again, it will become part of the, the record of the council meeting formally, but we wanted to, we felt it was important to have it read during the month of February. So that's why Councillor Bordelon graciously agreed to read it. Councillor Melendez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the memorial honoring Raheem Carter was scheduled on Monday, but it got rained out. So it's moved now to this Friday, the 26th, same time, same place, four o'clock at the park named after him. It's in Midway, on Midway Oval. And I just want to thank Parks and Rec for organizing the event. And to thank GMTV for recording the event. The event is limited to 50 people, but it will play on GMTV. So just thank you for everyone who was, you know, part of organizing it.
Thank you. Councillor Zepary.
I'll report.
Thank you. Okay, I have several things. Monday I attended, I was able to attend because the memorial is canceled. So I was able to make it to the Groton Sale Foundation meeting. And they are making good progress. They recently turned over a check to pay for the land purchase to the manager. They are working on producing a firmer budget. They have an estimate of the amount of money that they're going to be needing. They're going to be setting aside at least $500,000 in a maintenance account that will be handed to the town when the property is formally turned over. They're in process of talking to NAPC about what they need in order to get the formal transfer of the sale and the Fairwater Plains and the Rudder to the town. So we can start working on everything. Mr. Frost from Kent Frost is going to be making a more detailed design and there is a subcommittee that will be working on that design with him. So that was the Groton Sale Meeting. I wanted to just give a reminder, I was asked to give a reminder that the awards and recognition item was recommitted to personnel and appointments. So if that can be pleased taken up at one of your upcoming meetings, that would be great. Thank you. And the last thing I have is a communication from the members of the Democratic Caucus of the town council, and that would be Councillors Baumgartner, Parker, Franco, Heed, Aubrey, Bordelon, Melendez, Zepary and myself. And I have a letter that we have all signed and I would like the chance to read it to you now and to the public. February 22nd, 2021. Right now, the Town of Groton is sitting at a juncture. Years of planning and hard work by our town leaders are poised to become reality through new economic development across Groton. Thanks to the hard work of our town staff, vacant town-owned and state-owned properties are set to join the tax rolls and become contributing vibrant parts of our neighborhoods rather than wasting away as eyesores. But this council needs your help to support this transition. One of these projects is the state-owned Mystic Oral School property. This council ran on the principle of smart growth, choosing to grow existing developed land rather than touch natural spaces. Part of smart growth is also to combat sprawl and build density, encouraging mixed-use and walkable spaces. Mystic River Bluffs checks all these boxes. The character of Groton is the intersection of our history and cutting-edge technology. Maintaining the historic oral school buildings, including the lovely cupola and ship weather vane atop the stately red brick buildings and a mixed-use redevelopment serving our high-tech local industry is the best of both worlds. We must preserve our character rather than bulldozing as some have suggested. On a purely financial note, according to our town staff, the Mystic River Bluffs redevelopment is poised to become the third-largest taxpayer in our town. This council, as part of economic development, is striving to diversify our tax base. If we want money to ensure our high-quality schools continue to thrive, to support our award-winning parks programs and facilities, our amazing library, and yes, to protect and grow our green space, we need to expand our tax base. Over 80% of our workforce in Groton lives somewhere else. Another of our goals was to entice as many of those workers as possible and convince them to call Groton home. In order to capture these new residents, we require a variety of housing, including mixed-use walkable neighborhoods. Mystic River Bluffs is one such neighborhood. And when these new hires settle here in town, they will spend their income at our local shops and restaurants, providing yet another point of growth for our local economy. In addition to these stated advantages, Groton has the opportunity to realize amenities for the community that we otherwise could not afford, namely a community indoor pool and a performing arts center. As part of Mystic River Bluffs, the Pratt Building Pool will be rehabilitated and we are evaluating the potential of theater renovation as well. Neither of these two amenities are things that we could fit into our budget now or in the foreseeable future. This is an amazing opportunity to secure these facilities for the people of Groton. In addition, part of Mystic River Bluffs is the preservation of over 30 acres of green space as well as the addition of a trail down to the river for use by the public. Again, not something our budget could support at this time. So many facets to this project and so many benefits for the people of the Town of Groton. We ask you to join this council fostering smart growth by emailing your support to council@grotonct.gov. Thank you for allowing this council the privilege of serving you. And that's it. All right. I'm done with communications. We are on to approval of minutes. Councillor Baumgartner.
I'll make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 9, 2021. So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Aubrey. Any discussion on the minutes from February 9? Just trying to see if all the councillors are on the same page. They are. Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Is that an opposed or abstention? I'm sorry?
Franco is abstaining.
Abstain? Six in favor, zero abstention, zero opposed, one abstention, Franco. We are at seven councillors, by the way. So six in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, Franco. That passes. Okay, we are on to new business, 5A, 1021, 125 Mystic School Athletic Field Lights. This is on page 10. And I believe we are on to Councillor Franco, please.
Appropriately so.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to authorize inclusion of outdoor lighting for the middle school and the scope of the project to be paid for by bond proceeds. And so move.
Is there a second?
I think Bordelon.
Moved by Franco, seconded by Bordelon. And this evening we have Superintendent Austin and Mr. Kilpatrick with us to talk to us about this item. Superintendent Austin, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, we were really pleased that the board voted yesterday to take on Groton Middle School as the town's project and our school for Groton Public Schools. So it's such a beautiful building. I know many of you have been there and the fields are just wonderful. I think part of this project was to add more fields. So in the Groton 2020 Plan. And when we know, when we saw how the funds were, there were funds left over, we asked, I talked to John Burt and asked that we could use some of those funds to provide the lighting, therefore extending the use of the field. So you know, in talking to the athletic directors and the principals, it really looks like, you know, we'll be able to run practices when, with the, with the hope of this virus at least. More practices from after school, after school for middle school, after school for high school, and then into the evenings and have competitions. So I think the, the use of it will be extended by providing the lighting. And I think, you know, the more we can use our fields, the more our kids can get out there and play. I think that's all a good thing. So I don't know if Sam wanted to say anything else about the lighting of the fields.
No, I think you've said it all.
Who is that old man?
Oh, okay. Do any councillors have questions or comments about the project? Councillor Aubrey.
I just want to ask, I'm sure that you've looked at all of this, but there is nothing on the interior that we need for the students. You know, computers, equipment for labs or anything that you feel that this should go to? Are you comfortable with the fact that it's all right to spend this money on the lights?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I know that Sam has worked with the construction company and with, with the building committee and Rick Norris very closely. There was a punch list of some things, like some of the locking mechanisms and a few other things that are, are being also included. And then there's some things that we can take care of with our own staff as well. But really, I think, Sam, you could really speak to this better than I can because you've been very involved in that.
Yeah. The, between the building committee and, and the project managers, we've been added, we've been able to add quite a few items to the project over the course of the last year as the school opened. And one of those things that, the most recent was a newer lock set for each classroom for security purposes. So
I think larger Promethean boards was one of the items and we're gonna, we're working on that too for the elementary schools. So there were some extra things that we weren't counting on that were kind of like a bonus to us, but within the budget and you know, they were able to really, I think, do a very fine job. You don't usually hear after building a school that there's, you know, money remaining. So that was a good thing.
Yeah, Rick Norris has really done a terrific job in, in, in running the show there. And a couple of the other things are a skyfold door between the band room and the cafeteria so that that becomes a multi-use facility. Also, on the other two fields, the softball field and the turf field between, the grass field between the artificial field and the softball field, those two, the turf from Kingston, Rhode Island, rather than planting seed, they, they rolled out turf on those fields. So those fields will be ready for use much sooner than they would have been if they were planted.
Okay, I have one other question if I might.
Yeah, certainly. You have time.
Okay, when we were talking about this a long time ago, one of my main concerns was security and on the exterior of the building. Were we able to do that? We talked about cameras, we talked about different things, and I just want to be assured that that, that came into play.
Yeah, we had a consultant go through, as well as the camera people from the project, go through the whole project and make sure that there were plenty of cameras. I think since the school opened, we have an SRO there at the building and he's asked for one more camera that I know of that would actually face toward Fort Hill. I know if you see that pathway from Fort Hill about midway Fort Hill to the school.
Yeah.
It looks like we could use one more camera facing over into that new, well, that's the other, that was the other big item that was added to the project too. We have a special needs bus drop-off at the, at the Fort Hill side of that building. So those projects have all been added in.
Well, I, I just want to say, I think that your committee and yourselves and everybody have just done a marvelous job and I want to thank you for being patient about my always thinking you about something. Thank you.
Thank you. We have several councillors that wish to speak, the order in which I saw them come up is Franco, Zepary, Melendez and Bordelon. Councillor Franco.
Thank you. So when they put the lights in, I'm seeing that it's all going to be under budget and I think that's wonderful. And I was just wondering, so during construction, I remember there was discussion about them leaving power, the power supply that was going to go out to the trailers that were there a while back before the fields went in. So was the power left there and then we utilized that source as well?
Yeah, the lines are run out to the field so that, that, that portion of the project is already done and ready for the lighting to be placed.
Okay, so these are, I guess you'd call it the poles and the light fixtures and labor and things of that nature.
That's right.
But I think it's absolutely wonderful for the sport, you know, for the, the kids up there playing sports and to being able to utilize these fields and just the town has such a shortage of fields. And I know the school, you know, are really lacking and, and you really definitely need those things and to be able to utilize them, I think is absolutely wonderful. And I'm glad that during construction, there was some kind of agreement made that they could keep those electrical lines there because they were supposed to be removed from what I understood. And, and during the process, we said, hey, we might use them in the future. Let's see what we could do. So I think that's absolutely wonderful. And thank you all for everything that you're doing to help with the, the sports of the high school and the middle school. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Councillor Zepary, you're next.
I'd like to know what, what, this is a middle school. Are we going to have those fields available to people outside the school or are they going to be reserved for the students at the middle school?
So we actually have a policy that allows people to use our fields. Certainly the schools will take the priority. So their usage right after school is, you know, will be a priority. But, you know, for outside folks, they can always call the central office. We have in the business office, we have kind of a buildings and use form that if you wanted to use our buildings or you wanted to use our fields, you can certainly apply to do that. There may be some insurance that would be necessary because we don't want the town to be liable for injuries on the fields either. So we have to be careful with that. But there will be no charge for those fields at all for the lighting. So I had talked to John Burt about that. And because this is a bonding issue, we know that that cannot happen. So we've really talked with policy and finance and the board about that and will make sure that that doesn't happen.
And can you tell me what athletic programs you have that would be likely to be using the fields at night? In a middle school level?
Well, I would think the lacrosse teams may use them and especially for playtime and sometimes even on weekends, there would be, you know, need for usage of the fields. And certainly we have the softball teams. I would say more, more often you'll find them being used after school, you know. But with, with the ability to have them lit, you know, those after schools get cut way short back in the fall and winter, you know. So to be able to extend that time is terrific and even early spring.
I'm just wondering, how many, how many athletic events do you have going outdoors in the winter?
Not many, not many, but, you know, more in the fall. We do have quite a bit in the fall and in the spring.
You have football?
Not at the middle school.
Do you have soccer?
We do.
Field hockey for the kids in middle school?
Yep.
And you, you know, I remember the Athletic Field Task Force meeting. I inquired about adding lighting to our existing fields to extend their utility. And there would seem to be a consensus at that meeting that mothers don't like to have their kids out after dark. And so the use of lighting at fields is not, is not, it doesn't get utilized much. I don't know if it would be different if it were a school-supervised program or to what extent it would be a school-supervised. I'm just concerned about spending $875,000 for something that we're not sure is going to be used. There is no sin in returning the money to the general fund that isn't utilized. I mean, that's, that's really to be commended. If, if the lighting is truly needed, I would support it. But I'm not sure that it would be nice to have it as a good indication unless there were really a known demand for it and a known need for it that I would support.
So I have met with the administration in both the high school and the middle school, the athletic director and even the band director. So even with band practice, we need lights and they've actually had to purchase or, or rent lighting, you know, and do a makeshift. So to have these fields that are already lit, we can run a band practice, we can run sports. And I, I really think that, you know, having that combined campus, one of the benefits is to have someone oversee those activities and athletics so that we can grow our sports and to have someone who can communicate with our youth sports and see what's necessary for the middle school. Like we've even talked about growing wrestling, like Ledger has, you know, in the middle school and offering that. So there's going to be some things I think that we will be able to really make even better and improve for our students in the athletic program. And between athletics and activities, the more we get our students engaged in those before and after-school kinds of things, the more they're engaged in school. So I would really highly recommend that we have these lights and I will promise you they'll be put to use.
I'll accept your promise and support you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Councillor Melendez next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in our background information, it says that this money is unexpended. Did the rest of the project come under budget? And it just allows you to sort of use this money in, in a way to, that's going to put, put up these lights. Where in the original plan, you didn't Where in the original plan, you didn't have that.
Sam, you've been on this committee. Can you speak to that? Because I know in the beginning, um, there was some talk about having lighting. But I think that the way they had estimated the project, there weren't the funds for it. So by the efficiencies that they found during that process, there were funds at the end. Is that right, Sam? Or do you have something else to add to that?
No, you're absolutely correct. That originally, uh, we talked about lighting on the fields, but, uh, uh, the budget was pretty tight in the beginning. We were fortunate that things went very well throughout the project, uh, even through these terrible times. Uh, and that the budget, it did come in under budget in the end. And so these, uh, these monies are available for that. If I could add, uh, Mr. Councillor Zepari, that, uh, the artificial field, uh, artificial turf field is actually lined for three sports, for soccer, uh, lacrosse and for field hockey. And so it's a girls' and boys' soccer, girls' and boys' lacrosse, and then field hockey is a girl's sport. So it's, it's lined for all those sports. And as you know, when we get into the later fall, uh, mid-fall to late fall, it gets dark pretty early. So, uh, those practices usually end up, uh, in the dark, uh, or cut short. And, and this will allow some of those practices and some of those games in the fall to, uh, go on a little later in the evening.
Councillor Melendez, you still have time, sir, if you wish to speak more?
Thank you. Yes, um, I think that's great. Um, you know, it seems like they were trying to be conservative in the beginning and, and they didn't have the room in the budget, but they were able to be efficient enough where they had enough cost savings to, to, to add this on. So I think that's great. Another thing, fields are not, um, cheap to make. So I think the ones we have, we should get as much utilization out of them as possible. So I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we are on to councillor Bordelain next.
Thank you. Um, I've definitely watched this project over time and, and remember things being cut to size, to room size, to band size. So I think it's great if there is something to give back to the school because the concern was originally making sure that everything fit, fits. I think sending the money back to the general fund does no service to the, the, the education department. Um, the funds were originally set up for such business, and I think that business should be allocated back to whatever it is to enhance the well-being of our students in our town. And if that means the need for lights for our fields, that will not only benefit, benefit the middle school, but will also benefit the high school because there's kind of a little collaboration of a campus that's kind of been created there. Um, I, I encourage councillors to look beyond the use of it being a sports field. But let's think outside the box of maybe a middle school graduation or ceremony in the evening where the custodians or, or, or people who maintain the fields could bring in some portable bleachers that could be purchased. And people could sit and chairs could be laid out, um, and in a smaller capacity. I believe the population at the middle school is in the eight hundred range. I might be wrong, um, with that. But I'm, I'm trying to think back to my numbers, and they might not need Fitch High School, um, and, and you can do something else there. The town could then even use it for a ceremony in the evening with lights in the summer. So I, I see it from an economic standpoint, not just the field use. I think it benefits Fitch High School. We also have the church kind of in between it and the police station across the way. I, I just see a lot of different things in use that that could be used for. So I think it's going to be a great asset, and I would encourage the funds to be given back to the school. As many of you know, I support non-lapsing funds, and I would encourage any funds that come in that were earmarked for the school should return to the school and not always to the general fund. I understand that some funds should go back, but not all, because I think it's important to fund, um, the money where they came in from, back to where they should go. Um, with that, I, I think, um, I'm excited to see our, our female athlete, athletes at the middle school be, you know, serviced in the sense where they will have the chance to have lights. Um, the high school does not have a softball field with lights and, and the middle school having that sets a precedence. Um, so I, I just see the end of possibility. And speaking with the son who's in marching band, I think that that use will be, I think, we can find many things to do there. Let it be celebrations or dedications in the town, the sky is the limit. So I do have to point because people ask about fiscal responsibility and money, and that's always an issue. It does cost money to run those lights. Um, and some have asked, um, will, would there be any way to charge outside organizations? Not necessarily nonprofits, but some type of use fee to use these fields. I think it's important that with the turf and the grass, they do wear down over time. And we need to keep them, you know, functioning at the levels that they are. And so it is appropriate and other districts do do it. They do sign up and, and do the waiver forms, but they also take in some monies to offset the costs that used to the taxpayer in the town, um, for using those. So that's my one question. But overall, I fully support this. I think this is great. And I look forward to seeing, um, more use and more things that could come out of this and, um, watching our town grow. So that's my one question.
I can't wait to see our teams on those fields. I go by them every day and I keep, I can't wait to see the kids actually playing out there and going to a game.
So my question, um, is there any way to charge, again, uh, any use around your guys' end with these fields?
I can take this. Actually, first of all, I want to make a clarification that no funds from these could go back to the school or to the general fund. They're, they're bond dollars. And at the end, whatever is unspent, we just won't bond for. So to make that clear, obviously we'll pay for the bonds out of general fund dollars, but it can't go anywhere else. And as part of the bond process, they don't allow, if you try to charge for the fields, the bonds switch from being non-taxable to taxable for those portions, and it kind of messes up the whole thing. So essentially, the, the bond council said, don't go there. You can charge for electricity, um, if you want, um, but that's all you're allowed. Utilities are an exception, and that's it.
Okay, so one could then say if I had an event where I was going to recognize, um, I don't know, some scholars at that night, and I wanted to use that field in the evening for a certain amount of hours, and I filled out my application, they could charge to offset the cost of the utility?
Yes, correct. Only that amount, though, that it takes, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, and just, just so people know, there's, uh, that budget's actually six million under. So I just want to recognize also, Rick Norris, the permanent school, um, building committee, as well as the great partnership with the Board of Ed in bringing this together.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering those questions. And again, thank you for doing all that you do. Thanks.
Okay, um, I, I am on the list to speak, and then councillor Baumgartner and then councillor Obray. So let me start this. Thank you for your fine work in bringing the project in under budget. That's, that's excellent. Um, I'm pleased that we're finding ways to make those fields more usable. Um, I, I do think they will be used. I think the lights will be very helpful because there are a lot of sports teams out there just for, just associated with the middle school. And the high school can use them for practices. And even as Superintendent Austin said, the bands can, can use the fields as well. Um, my other, my other question was if, if this is using all of the money that was under budget, or if there's more money that is under budget, and if there is other money, can it be port, put towards, um, the solar for the school? I know we're in negotiations with trying to get, um, a contract worked out. But if there were money that were needed to supplement that, is there money left over after these lights to put towards renewable energy for the middle school?
I think John Burt has the answer to that.
Well, I would, I would want to run it by the bond council before I give an answer. I would want to make sure the bonds aren't affected. Um, I think it's a possibility, but I will get back to you as soon as I get that answer.
Thank you. I think we've talked about it before, and I think you told me the same thing. So thank you very much. I'm persistent. And thanks again for, for using that for something that is going to benefit the kids. We do appreciate that. And we are on to councillor Baumgartner. We're next. You have the floor, sir?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you Superintendent Austin and, uh, Mr. Kilpatrick for joining us, uh, tonight. Like to echo, uh, the mayor's remarks. You know, very happy to hear that the project is, uh, under budget. I know, um, your office has been, uh, excellent stewards of, uh, you know, tax funds, uh, you know, taxpayers' funds throughout this construction project. And, uh, can't wait to, you know, uh, see, uh, both the Thames River, uh, and, um, as well as Mystic River Elementary Schools open in, uh, in a few months. So very exciting. Obviously, pandemic, it will likely be a softer opening. But, uh, nonetheless, um, you know, can't wait to, to see schoolchildren start going into them and, and learning and, and teachers finally, um, being able to, you know, enjoy, um, their time with their students. So I know we're, um, we're an unprecedented time. So again, thank you for your leadership, uh, as well. I believe manager Burt got to, uh, some of the questions I, I did have. Just with respect to, um, the use of the, uh, unused, um, uh, bond balance or the, uh, you know, unused bond proceeds. Do we have an idea of what the, uh, unexpended, um, uh, balances as of now? Or is that simply a number we, we, um, uh, cannot have because we have not issued, uh, uh, all of our bonds yet for the school construction project?
It's, uh, not exactly finalized, but it's approximately six million left on this project.
And so, um, and to echo councillor Bordelain's point, um, you know, uh, instead of, um, returning that back, I, I really do think that there are no shortage of projects with respect to our skilled children that, uh, should be, uh, explored so that, um, you know, we make use of the, you know, those, uh, those funds. So I, I would implore, you know, our, our, our Board of Education to continue doing their due diligence to find those opportunities. You know, whether it's, obviously, we're doing the lights now, but, um, you know, especially as we're looking at, at, um, building more, um, you know, amenities for, for our schoolchildren within the classroom, you know, would, would very much, um, support, you know, using those funds for that. So, um, you know, I, I believe, and I can't speak for the rest of the council, but, you know, um, you know, please don't hesitate to come back to us again, you know, if, should, should you like to, um, you know, um, use, uh, or those existing funds for, uh, projects down the road that you may not be able to announce. Uh, again, thank you so much. And, um, you know, can't wait to see, uh, see the lights on for our game.
Yeah, me too.
I'm just double checking to make sure we're not missing anybody before we go to second time. And everybody's spoken. Okay, councillor Obray, uh, for your second time on this topic, please.
I couldn't get my hand to come down. All the questions I had have been answered.
Okay, that's great. So then councillor, the scene shifted. I have to. Councillor Bordelain? Did you, did you want to speak again, councillor Bordelain?
Yes, of course.
Okay, go for it.
My other question, I had some other notes here. Um, have bleachers been purchased for those fields?
Can you answer that, Sam?
There are bleachers, uh, for that field, um, but they're not very, they're not very large bleachers. They're like, uh, maybe three or four rows, I believe.
Yeah.
I don't know if you saw the, the pad for them on either side of the field, but it's not a very large area.
Yeah, I think to councillor Zepari's point, in some ways, making sure they're be used. If there's an extra remaining fund, a couple of notes I have, I just quickly pulled up, um, some of the parents that have been using it for field hockey and stuff, and scoreboard and bleachers were a concern. So looking at the mass use of it, it feels like as we put the lights on, maybe possibly the bleachers might need some updating already. Not that they couldn't be still used because they're great to kind of move off to a side, especially with social distancing. But it sounds like it could use another tier there or two, as well as some scoreboards to, um, really make that place useful. Is, is, is there any scoreboards there?
There aren't no scoreboards at this time.
Correct. So, um, is there any way or how, how much time do we have, John Burt, to, uh, um, time, uh, to consider these funds for uses like that? What does our timeline look like?
I just texted Cindy to verify. I think we have some time. And I've already just reached out to the bond council. She said if the council wants to do a resolution to amend the project scope, you could do solar. So I imagine that would mean you could do other things, too.
Okay. Well, those are some of the things that constituents had reached out to me about a while back. And those are things, as I look at that, I hate to put these big lights and then we're struggling to have the seating or the scoreboard. So let's think big picture. Okay, now we got the lights on the field. Now let's think about the amenities that we could use there, including also what, uh, the mayor had spoke about, about the solar aspect. Um, so I think it would be important to really make sure that that field with, I'm not saying anyone's doing it haphazard, but I would think if we have the remaining funds and let's make sure that field is really put to the test and has the amenities that we can support now, um, considering that we're using it as a collaboration with the high school and, and looking forward, um, three rows might not be enough, and I'm already hearing that it's not. Um, also, when other schools come, there's not a much place for them to put their bags and things down there. So there are some things that are running short down there. It's a great field. Um, and obviously, when this was thought about many years ago, um, these, these thoughts were still coming. But now that we are under budget, I, I would love to talk, and I'm not sure how that would go about, but to talk about how we get some scoreboards down. Um, middle school is a competitive sport with high school using them as well. Our surrounding towns use scoreboards, and that's what they need, um, and add bigger bleachers. So, um, how, how could we move forward to maybe come back and talk about that?
Sam, could you look into like the price of something like that, the bleachers and the scoreboards to see? And maybe talk to Rick Norris about that?
Yeah, I'll talk to Rick. I think, uh, probably we'll talk to, uh, Mr. Frost, too, at Kenton Frost, uh, because he has some ideas about that stuff, too.
I would agree.
And we've got our sign coming in, too, for Groton Middle School, right?
Yes.
That's on it, on the list.
I, I was thinking more so the scoreboard with the power, if someone's coming to put lights in, it might be a good time when they're tapping into that power line to utilize the lights. And then the bleachers could obviously come after. But anyway, I, I appreciate any thoughts, and I'd love for you guys to come back and report about it, if there's a way to, um, make some more amenities down there. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to mention, I, I just, uh, could face this, Cindy, we have quite a lot of time. There's going to be three more bond issuances, so there's, uh, plenty of time to figure out what people want to do.
And my, my last question, if I may, Mayor, uh, I just had a thought. This bond for, for this remaining fund can't be used at the elementary schools, correct? It only can be at the middle.
That's my understanding.
Can you double check on that?
I'll double check it, yeah.
Just in case something else falls short at the elementary, I would hate that we try to exhaust the funds there if there's a possibility, there's a need, um, um, elsewhere.
We're looking forward to having, um, Jerry come and talk to us about the Athletic Field Task Force. So he'll be coming to our board meeting on March eighth. So that's also something that we've put in CIP, the field house, of course, you know, and things at the high school that really, um, are a priority, I understand, with the task force. So I was really pleased to see that. So those are things in the future that we'll want to also work on, um, at the high school. But considering that this is now, uh, you know, a campus, an international baccalaureate campus, um, where we can really share space on the inside and the outside of our schools. You know, it really gives us some flexibility for all our kids. So we're very happy with that. It's really a crown jewel for Groton, I think.
Thank you.
Very nice. I'm going to speak for my second time here. I'm, I'm startled, um, by the amount of money that is left over. Uh, that's amazing. That is truly amazing. Having said that, I really feel strongly that we should try to do something with renewable energy. I also understand that we, we just turned the building over to the Board of Ed. So it's, it's now out of town hands. So I'm not sure, um, how much we as a council can do now that the project is no longer ours. It is now a Board of Ed property. I'm not sure, um, you know, how this would play out, even if the bond council says that these things are possible. The final decision is out of our hands now. Is that correct, Mr. Burt?
Well, the final decision will be, the Board of Ed would, with, I assume, input from you guys will, will make a request. But the council, the council will have to do a resolution amending the scope to add items. So you'll be the final say if something's going to go through. And I did find out, by the way, the bond dollars are considered one pot, so they can be used for other buildings. So I would recommend, you know, not going, you know, not spending too awful much. You know, leave some in case of overages on the others.
Repeat that again, please, Mr. Burt. The bond is.
The, uh, bond dollars are considered one pot. They were not, uh, they were not divvied up between schools, meaning you can spend them on different schools.
Okay, so then this money might, we might do well to not start spending it until the other buildings are done.
And the last bond issue won't be until, uh, twenty-three, so we have a little while.
Okay. So then I'm, I'm just going to go, let me start my timer again. I'm just going to go on record as saying if the other two buildings come in, we'll. I'm just going to go on record as saying if the other two buildings come in, we'll know in the fall, because those buildings will be online in the fall. If they come in fine, on budget, and we still have unexpended funds, I would seriously like the Board of Ed and the Permanent School Building Committee to consider doing something with renewable on the campus at the top of the hill. I think it's so important that we move in that direction, and we have two groups tonight that are going to be presenting to us. You know, the Conservation Commission is here, the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force is here, and these are all things that we're trying to do. And if we have the ability to do that now with these brand-new buildings, I think it would be a great opportunity, and it would be, it would be sad to miss that opportunity. Again, I do recognize we have two buildings that have to be finished, and if they do the amazing job that they've done with the middle school, they'll come in right on budget, and maybe we can take some steps to get us to more renewables up there on top of the hill. So, thank you, and I will end my time. And Counselor Franco for a second time.
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief. I know a scoreboard has been mentioned, and with a scoreboard, usually you're going to need some kind of facility to keep the equipment inside for somebody to keep the score. So, I mean, there's additional expense. It's not just a scoreboard. You'd have to have, I don't know what it's called, right there behind like home plate, like up at the baseball field. I don't even know what that's called. But I would also err on the side of caution at this moment, and I think the lights are a great addition. I think we definitely need this at this location and at this time. So I'm definitely in favor of that, but I would be a little cautious with how to spend the remaining money until we see how the remaining schools come in and see what the necessary needs are after everything's finished, and then see what you, you know, the school comes up with, what their thoughts are on what the needs are. I like the idea of sustainability as well, though I also know the extreme shortage of sports fields in our community as a whole, and if we can utilize that in any way, it would be wonderful. So I'll wait for you guys to come back to us at a future date and with some more ideas, and we'll see how things go. Thank you. Thanks.
So everyone has had a chance to speak twice. We have a counselor who would like to speak for a third time. If there's no objection, we can do that, or if there is objection, we will stick to the council rules and go with just twice on each item. Is there objection?
Excuse me, the usual procedure is to determine whether or not there's a consensus to go around a third time.
Is there a consensus to go around a third time?
If it's shot.
If it's- If it's short. All right, so it sounds like there's, I'm not hearing, is there objection from anyone? Is there consensus? Is there objection? I've only heard one person speak, so I'm going to go ahead and say you can go. But please, please be mindful of the time, Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you. So after I had asked the question to the town manager, and he had stated that yes, in fact, the funds could be used with the other schools, which is what I wanted clarification on, I wanted to speak again and state that I think it is fiscally responsible to wait and see also what happens with those other schools. So I just wanted to be clear. That's why I wanted that question answered. But I do think having the wish list ready to see and start pricing items in which could be used there, like scoreboard, like extra bleachers, so we kind of know where we are. But wait to see where those other schools and any outliers or problems that could come up with those. Unless the scoreboard or issue with that would need to be put in while they're doing the powering, that would be something to consider. But I also am for the sustainability aspect. But thank you, John, for answering the question.
All right, very good. So we will vote on 2021-125, Middle School Athletic Field Lights. And we are at seven counselors, so all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven counselors. Thank you very much, Superintendent Austin and Mr. Patrick. Appreciate you.
Really appreciate your partnership in all of this. I think teamwork that has caused Groton 20 to 20 happened, so thank you all.
Lots of work. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to 2021-101, Approval of Regular Part-Time Program Director Position. And this is on page 12 in your packet. And this is, I believe, Counselor O'Bree.
Let's see, town, which part of my reading here?
Just the motion at the very bottom.
Thank you. Motion to recommend, I'm sorry, to recommend a resolution approving the regular part-time program director position.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by O'Bree and seconded by Bordelon. Mr. Zagami is here, and I believe Ms. Riley is here, or did Mr. Burt want to take this?
I'll let Bob be the, Mr. Zagami be the lead.
I'm not seeing him on this screen. Let's see.
He should be a panelist.
Mr. Zagami, you have the floor, sir.
Don't wake him.
I can't unmute him. I've asked him to unmute. Mr. Zagami?
I got it.
There you go. You have the floor, sir.
Okay. Good evening. Bob Zagami, Assistant Town Manager and Director of Human Resources. I'm here with Mary Jo Riley from our senior center, seeking approval for the combining of three part-time positions into one regular part-time position, program director. Currently, we have two positions for the program supervisor and a part-time program coordinator. It's our request to transition all of these into one position, which is a regular part-time program director. Our rationale for this restructure is as follows. Having three separate positions that were limited opportunities for interaction between the employees, since the schedules did not regularly coincide. This often led to a lack of coordination among the three. Combine these three part-time positions into one regular part-time position will provide opportunity to better communicate and enhance our service to our seniors. Additionally, the limited hours of each of these part-time positions made it difficult for recruiting and turnover. The regular part-time position is proposed for 30 hours per week, which will enhance the recruiting and retention. All three positions were costing about $32,177 per year. The single position will be less than that. It'll be $31,556. That even includes a benefit of 4%, which was $1,263. So that comes up to a savings of $621. And I'll turn this over to Mary Jo to put her part in.
Thank you, Mr. Zagami.
Um, thank you. By combining this position, it's really going to give us better oversight for our volunteer program. We have a Discover Connections dementia program that was split between these positions. For those participants, it's better to have a continual person dealing with them. So again, better coordination of our programs. And we have, in the job description, actually enhanced the qualifications. So we feel we'll get better candidates if we're offering more hours. We, one of the positions was only 10 hours a week, and it's very difficult to fill part-time jobs nowadays. Even with people unemployed nowadays, they're looking for full or more hours. So this really will enhance our programming at the center.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Are there any counselors who have questions or comments for Mr. Zagami or Ms. Riley regarding this position? Counselor O'Bree?
Could you tell us again what were the three positions before?
They were two part-time program supervisors and one part-time program coordinator. And so one was 19 hours, one was 12 hours, and one was 10 hours.
Okay. Well, not really understanding this as well at this point, I'll go with your recommendation. So thank you very much.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So reading this, I just want to clarify that, from what I'm seeing, this would actually save money. It would reduce the combined salaries that were being paid, and it's not actually creating a new position. It's just combining a position. It's not like a new, like, I'm not saying it the right way. I'm sorry. It's not actually a new position. It's combining two positions into one, and it won't increase the budget. And you have, you seem to have a definite need for this, from what you're explaining to us. And I think it would help you as well. So thank you for bringing this forward.
You're welcome. It is also in the special revenue account, so it's not general fund money. This is special revenue money.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon and then Melendez.
Thank you. As other counselors have stated, it's great to see a cost savings. My first question, though, is what's happening to the other employees that were in these positions?
Well, we started discussing combining them because in the 12-hour position, that person left, and the 10-hour position, a person left, and then COVID happened. So we decided not to hire because officially, the building is closed, even though we're doing programs virtually now, or we're doing them outside when the weather is good. So we chose not to hire, not realizing that COVID was going to keep us closed for so long. So in discussions with Mark Berry, my director, and with Bob Zagami, we felt that by combining them, we will get better qualified candidates and just have a better overall program.
Okay, so there's nobody currently slotted to go in this? This is going to be open for people to apply, or is it already someone?
I have, I do have one person working the 19-hour position, and she currently coordinates our volunteers, as well as does a virtual dementia program.
Okay. All right, so that position is going away as well, or is that one of the ones, or no?
Um, that's one of the ones. It will go away, and she will have the opportunity here to apply.
All right. It seems like if this is going to be the restructure that works best for the departments, and there's, it looks like there's not going to be an increase in funds. It seems that we're being fiscally responsible in that avenue, but also enhancing and meeting the needs of the consumers of the program. So that sounds like a no-brainer to me. But thank you for presenting this, and I appreciate all the efforts.
Thank you.
Counselor Melendez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, it sounds like it's cheaper and more efficient, so I'm all for it. I, too, was wondering if this was going to be a layoff. It sounds like the answer to that is largely no, although there is one person affected. Hopefully, they will get the full, the full position. But yeah, I will support it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. So we will vote on 2021-101, Approval of Regular Part-Time Program Director Position. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zagami and Ms. Riley, for coming out this evening. Be well.
Thank you.
We are now on to 2021-122, Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management Sign On. This is page 15 in your packet, and I believe we are on to Counselor Bordelon.
Thank you. Motion to recommend a resolution authorizing Mayor Patrice Gennotowski to act on behalf of the town council and sign the Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management and appoint town staff members as needed to serve on this group by some of us.
Second.
Moved by Bordelon and seconded by O'Bree. I believe we have Mr. Hanover with us this evening to address this particular item.
Yes, good, good evening, everybody. This is Greg Han. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. And I also have tonight Stacy Leach, who is my administrative supervisor and also our SCARA representative. The Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management, it's quite a mouthful, CCSMM, was begun last year by the state DEEP and a number of towns and cities throughout the state to address the growing waste disposal, disposal issue in the state. Currently, this coalition is made up of 75 towns and cities working with DEEP to collaborate on new programs and to reduce solid waste, improve reuse, recycling, and organic composting throughout the state. Of these 75 towns, four of them are currently SCARA members. Just a brief history, you know, in the 1980s, in an effort to address closure of landfills, the state, you know, put in a number of waste-to-energy facilities. Some of these plants are nearing the end of their useful life and requiring quite a bit of expensive upgrades. You've probably read in the news about the MIRA facility in Hartford, which is the Material Innovation Recycling Authority. That plant is a very large plant that serves about 50 towns and cities, cities in the state, and that plant is most likely going to close in 2022. And those towns are currently paying about $90 a ton for disposal fees. So Groton, you know, we're pretty lucky as a member of SCARA. We just signed our agreement to go to the Wheeler-Bader Plant in Lisbon, which is a new plant. So we don't have, you know, any issues with that plant closing in the near future, and we are only paying about $58 a ton. However, in the near future, you know, things may change a little bit for us. So we see this coalition as a good opportunity for us to kind of get a seat at the table to, you know, address future solid waste issues in the state and, you know, collaborate with other towns, come up with innovative programs in the future. And so we see it as a positive for the town. There's no financial obligation to be a member of this town. It does require, you know, the town council to approve us joining, and it really is just staff time at this point. So I don't know, Stacy, if you have anything else to add?
No, this is Stacy. No, I don't have anything else to add, but, you know, historically, we've been always at the forefront in the waste and recycling field, so it gives us an opportunity to continue that.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Burt, did you want to add anything before we go to counselors?
Nothing for me, other than I'm supportive.
Thank you. Okay, I saw, I thought I saw two hands. Counselor O'Bree, did you have your hand up?
I did have a question. It's probably a little bit off-center of things, but I was wondering, what happened with the Preston plant?
It's still there and operating. We just, you know, SCARA just ended their lease or their agreement there, and we go to Lisbon now.
Okay, is there some particular reason that, I mean, would that one be in so much closer?
Stacy, you're a member of SCARA. You could maybe answer better than I.
Yes, we negotiated a lower tipping fee with the Lisbon site than we did with Preston.
And, and, and put into that calculation was the cost of fuel?
Yes. We have a transportation subsidy that is provided as well.
I beg your pardon?
They're part of the SCARA. SCARA subsidizes the tipping fee and also provides a transportation subsidy to offset the cost of traveling to the, to the plant.
I see. And Preston wouldn't offer anything like that?
No, Preston's tipping fee was higher, so the council negotiated to proceed with Lisbon. So, the council negotiated to proceed with Lisbon.
Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So, I'm here, it states that we're authorizing the mayor to act on behalf of the Town Council and sign on to the Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management and appoint town staff members as needed to serve on the group. Who would the town staff members be that we appointed to be on this group?
My own proposal would be Stacy, since she's a member of SCARA, you know, is very familiar with all the issues that, you know, we're facing.
And can you, I mean, I understand you explained it, but I'm not exactly sure what we're gaining exactly by being on this. Can you explain it maybe a little bit better?
It's just, it's a chance for us to go to meetings with other communities throughout the state that are facing, you know, solid waste issues, recycling issues, you know, to increase and just discuss ways to, you know, come up with maybe some new programs that, you know, we might want to implement in the town.
Is there, so is there a potential for collaboration with surrounding towns? Maybe to work together as, to get better pricing? Or to come up with different ways to do things so that we can maybe enhance things? I'm not exactly sure. Other than, I mean, I understand, it's just, so we're, we'd sign up and we'd go to meetings, but I'm not exactly sure exactly what we're going to get out of it. So, I was just questioning if, about sending staff to this. That's what all I'm questioning.
I mean, there are, you know, we also are a member of SCARA, so, you know, there are programs that they are, you know, pursuing as well. But, you know, if we're finding we're not getting anything out of it, then, you know, I mean, maybe we don't send staff to these meetings. I don't know. It's, it's just, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for, for us to collaborate with some other communities. I know Stonington, North Stonington are members. So, there is some potential for some, you know, collaboration.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and a big thank you to, to both Stacy and Greg for putting this proposal forward. Understand that the working group or the organization has had held meetings now for, I believe, just over a year. And while Groton wasn't a part of the sort of the kickoff meetings, I'm really excited to hear that we're looking to join some of our surrounding municipalities and other municipalities in the state, talking about solid waste issues and how we can divert, whether it's food, food waste or recyclable material from our waste stream. So, my, again, my hat's off to you, Greg, and Stacy. Actually, Stacy, your name came up in a conversation I had with the surrounding municipal leader, and they had mentioned you both attend, you know, SCARA meetings, but are a big advocate for, for many of these innovative ideas now, in that I ought to connect with you. So, you know, I know we have had conversations offline, as I've had with our Public Works Director about adopting or identifying, identifying innovative solutions to tackle our solid waste issues here. But I have a question, sort of a, sort of a long, long question. You know, obviously, in the town of Groton, we sort of devolve issues of solid waste to our, to our fire districts. So, for case in point, there are several fire districts here within Groton, including the city of Groton. Obviously, we have our own Public Works Department, but other fire districts offer their own, their own trash collection. Case in point, I know in Mystic, you know, they contract with a private hauler. There are fire district contracts with the private hauler to offer, you know, trash collection. Whereas, if you live in the Paquana Bridge Fire District, you have to contract on your own with, with a private hauler. So, my question is, given those challenges, how can Groton best tackle issues of, again, diverting, you know, organic materials or recyclables from the waste stream and work collaboratively amongst all stakeholders here in the community to hit our goals and benchmarks for diversion in the future?
Stacy, do you want to tackle that question?
I'm sure. So, um, what we do is that we have, obviously, multiple fire districts that provide trash services, and whereas the town as a whole does not. This, the, the districts that provide trash service now have that part as part of their charter. And we do not, the Town Council does not provide residential collection as a whole. But the only thing we don't, we're not only looking at the waste that we generate from our kitchen tables or in our home, or in our, that go into our trash cans, this group will also be looking at, like, product stewardship. Now, a couple of years ago, there were issues with disposing of mattresses that we were finding them on, on dead ends or being disposed of illegally, or people were not willing to pay to dispose of them. So, part of the legislation that, that the state did was to impose a fee. So, when you bought a new mattress, you paid a small fee. Part of the price was part of a small fee, and you were, had the opportunity to dispose of that for free. So, now, if you get a mattress, or you have a mattress to get rid of, you can bring it to the transfer station for free. We have a container there, and we offer that type of service to move forward. So, this group would be looking at other items as well to try to identify things that are difficult to get rid of. Gas cylinders, like from your gas grill, be a larger one that you might have, or even the smaller ones, looking for product stewardship on items along those lines. So, there's a lot of elements of the trash of the waste stream that we can address and try to better manage that. Food waste recycling, we are working on that with SCARA as part of a SCARA committee to start a pilot program so that we can separate food trash and then work on a solution as either locally to provide that service to private haulers or residents, and then expand it to the state level. So, this is kind of what this group is looking forward to, try to identify that and work together to achieve those goals.
I guess a simple, a simple yes or no question. You would agree that the deep, deep-sponsored CCSMM in the sharing of best practices is in the public, the best interest of residents here?
Yes, I do.
Yes, and I'll just also add to Counselor Baumgartner that, you know, these private haulers, like the CWPMs, you know, and whatnot, to do the Mystic Fire District, you know, this coalition would work with them, too, to, you know, do things like the organic composting, the recycling, increase recycling and those type of things, so that everybody would be kind of working together to try to reduce waste.
Well, thank you both for your leadership on this, and I fully support your efforts. Thank you again.
Thank you. I'm going to take a turn here, and then I see other councillor hands up as well. I think it's vital that our town participate in this coalition because we are at a juncture, as it says in the material that we received, where the facilities that we currently use to dispose of our waste are aging, and something is going to have to be done. And it's an opportunity to, to work as a team to try to find innovative solutions rather than burning, right? Maybe, maybe we can come up with the anaerobic digesters or whatever these, you know, we don't know what we might be able to do. And that's, that's the beauty of a group like this, is people that do know about how to handle these materials get together, and they brainstorm, and they come up with ideas. And, you know, maybe they write grants and bring the ideas back to the regional recovery authorities, and we move forward. But I think it's very beneficial for us to participate in this as a way of looking towards a future and trying to be environmentally sound in the disposal of our waste products, rather than simply turning to incineration. So, I fully support the town participating in this, and I'm sure Ms. Leach would do a fine job as our representative on, as a member of the Sustainable Materials Management Group. And next, we have Counselor Bordelain.
Uh, thank you. I think this is a great effort. I fully support it. I think as we look at our neighboring towns, we have to realize that we do share the waterways and the environment with them. It doesn't stop where we stop paying taxes, and maybe in whatever we do on this side affects and vice versa. So, I think it is nice to have that collaboration and look at ways to be efficient and look at the environment as a whole, and make sure we're doing all best practices and offering maybe some collaborative programs that could come out of this and better support, some ideas. There could be things that we're doing here that another town, you know, could benefit from and vice versa. So, I think that's great. I always am all for open up collaboration with neighboring towns. I know with Counselor Baumgartner brought up the Paquana Bridge District, and I, and I know you brought up the whole mattress issue, too. It'd be great to frequently post that, you know, hey, residents, you know, without having to click through the document to find it on the website, that every now and then, things that can be dropped off to the, the center for free. Now, I know when I've bought new mattresses, they just take them away as part of the, you purchased, we'll take it. But now I know, I didn't feel, I feel informed tonight, thank you, that, you know, a mattress could be dropped off there for free, you know? So, that type of education is so crucial. But looking at the pandemic and from an affordability, you know, looking at Paquana Bridge area where they have to pay, and they pay some of the highest, like, tax over there, but they have some of the least amount of services, in my opinion, is, could some collaboration come forward to help folks or in areas that could not afford trash removal? I know there were some federal and state grants at one time, especially with the pandemic going on, to help folks that may be struggling. We might take it for granted that we can afford that, but that can, you know, contribute to waste being dumped from an affordability standpoint. So, I guess I have a two-part question. Is that any part of the collaboration that could be brought forward? And if so, I think it'd be great. Has there been any talk on how to support our community thus far for that? So, I guess those are my two things, and I have one more follow-up.
One of the, the issues that this group will be looking at is unit-based pricing, kind of a pays-as-you throw kind of thing. But, you know, I can't comment on Paquana Bridge and their operation, but, you know, that is something that, you know, we could be looking at in the future.
I guess, I don't want people to be turned away that can't afford to dump hazardous material or certain materials. That's where we run into problem. And so, I think if there's some collaboration to look into that from an environmental standpoint, it'd be very helpful. But I think this is great. I think this collaboration is needed. I think it's, I'm interested to see where it goes. And any other items that can be disposed of, you know, I know they're on the site when you dig in deep, but the average person doesn't unfortunately go to those sites. So, maybe, you know, maybe something now being part of this program, maybe some frequent updates and things and posted would be very helpful to kind of get out to folks. So, I look forward to seeing it. I think with the seas rising and there's more storms, our trash, as Mayor Gennettowski has stated, our infrastructure is getting old, and, and we got to start thinking about what we're going to do from an environmental standpoint. And I think having a way to make waste be more accessible to dispose of and cost-friendly will also help because the average person can't afford to dispose of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. See no other hands. So, we will vote on 2021-122, Connecticut Coalition for Sustainable Materials Management. Sign on. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, moved unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hanover, and thank you, Ms. Leach. We look forward to hearing some great progress from you with regard to this topic. Thank you. All right. We are on to 2021-103, Pleasant Valley School Property Sale. Schedule public hearing, page 20. And I think Counselor Melendez?
Okay. You say page 70?
Page 20.
20, okay. Let me get to it. Okay. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the scheduling of a public hearing for April 6, 2021, for the sale of the former Pleasant Valley School property. So, moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Franco. Thank you. And I believe, I thought I saw Mr. Reiner here.
Yes, I am.
Hello? Would you like to tell us about what this resolution means, sir? Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Thank you for having me on tonight. So, very quickly, with each one of these public property redevelopments, we have to hold a public hearing prior to moving forward with the actual sale of the property. So, for some of these, you know, we've been trying to look at ways that we can keep the process moving along and getting good public input early in on the process. So, particularly with the Pleasant Valley site, we've issued the RFP for this property. We have received proposals, and we're going currently through the interview process with potential preferred developers. We have not selected a preferred developer yet, but we did want to move forward with advertising the public hearing because the public hearing is really focused on the sale of the property, not the actual use of the property. So, we wanted to schedule that public hearing for April 6 of 2021, so we can get any feedback regarding the sale of the property.
So, so to clarify, Mr. Reiner, in order to sell this property, it doesn't matter what the use is going to be, we need to have this public hearing?
That is correct. Thank you.
Thanks. Do any councilors have questions for Mr. Reiner? Okay. Seeing none. Oh, Counselor Bordelain, do you have a question for this particular item?
I do. Sorry, I was kind of late. My computer. What is this property estimated at right now?
Uh, estimated at?
Like the value of it, or?
We have had an appraisal on the property. If you hold on a minute, I'll see if I can find the number on that.
Yeah, thanks.
I do believe the appraisal's actually been posted up on our webpage, too, but hold on a second. Maybe if we can go into the other comments while I'm looking for that.
Counselor Bordelain, do you want me to go to the next councillor while Mr. Reiner is doing your research?
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Remind me. So, we are on to Counselor Franco and then Melendez.
So, my question is, when do we think we might be hearing what the preferred developer is and making a presentation to the council to explain and?
We already did.
For Pleasant Valley, I think we will, the interview committee, the review committee is still meeting on that. I think they're looking to meet sometime again in the next couple of weeks. That's an internal committee. There are council members and RTM members on that committee. Once they come up with a recommendation, we will bring that recommendation to the Town Council and Executive Session to discuss that under property negotiations. And then, at that point in time, once the council has agreed that they want to move forward conceptually with that preferred developer, we would then take that public, have them do a public presentation about their proposal, and get some public feedback from that, and then move into the next stages of the project, or into the next stages of the process, I should say.
And as I usually ask, do you have any kind of estimated timeframe for this?
I expect to be before the council and executive session, hopefully in the next two months or so on this, to talk about a preferred developer from there. I think we would probably be looking another couple of months out to take something more public. You know, it could be two or three months from there. And then, through any other processes, you know, a real, a, a public display of what they're looking to do, then the next steps would be option agreements and things along those lines.
All right, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Melendez?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I am a proud alumnus of the old Pleasant Valley School, so I'm excited to see what it, what it becomes. I just have sort of a process question. This is the public hearing, this is just for you guys to gather information from the public on what they want it to be, because I remember other public hearings where it was already sold and it was sort of like an unveiling.
So the other public hearings that we've had, so there have been public meetings that we've had to show what the preferred developer is proposing on the property. That's a public meeting. This is a public hearing that's required by state law that has to happen prior to us actually selling the property. So we will be, this is more just to get feedback on the sale of the property. Does the town want to sell the property? So one of the items through the, the process of us selling all these properties, we send an 824 referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They look at, is the sale of the property consistent with the town's plan of conservation and development or what are the uses there? That's something we would look at. So this sale and, oh, sorry, this public hearing has to do strictly with the sale of the property as opposed to the, what the end use of the property is going to be.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. This does get confusing because there are a lot of steps and each one of these properties, we're going through it. So I think it's easy for any of us, you know, to, you know, we actually have almost like an internal Gantt chart that we've been using for each one of the properties so that we can look at, all right, what have we done with this one? Where are we? What are the next steps? Because there are so many public steps that we have to go through for each one of these properties to ensure that we're complying, you know, with the law, with getting valued, you know, public input, et cetera, on all of these projects.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I had.
Okay. I was just going to see if you had anything else. And I'm not seeing any other hands. So we will vote on 2021 103 Pleasant Valley.
Reading on my question, excuse me, point of clerk.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I apologize. I did ask you to remind you.
Yes.
Do you have time to find that? You've been talking the whole time, so.
And I'm good at multitasking. So I did find the appraisal that we had conducted for the property. The date of the appraisal was July 11, 2019. The appraisal value was $5,700,000. Now, that value is contingent upon the granting of all necessary building permits, subdivision approvals, and a number of other assumptions. So, you know, one of the things when we talk about appraisals, appraisal is often more art than science and there's a lot of assumptions that go into these. So that is, it's a good snapshot and an understanding, is there value to the land? Yes. Do I think, you know? So I'll leave it at that.
And then my last question was, based on the location, what are we currently looking at that what could go there as far as development?
So this is zone, this is a property that's in a commercial corridor. Commercial uses are allowed there, as is multifamily housing. That's something we have had a lot of interest in, in this corridor, being close to the base. I think we're probably going to see a use along those lines, but I don't want to commit to that until, you know, we go through that interview process and look at what the preferred developers have to bring before you, the council.
So it can be used as a commercial space or apartment style building project?
Correct.
And what's the square, how big is the property?
Give me one second on that. If you have another question, throw that out at me. So as I looked at.
And what type of hazardous waste is currently on this? Has that been distinguished yet too?
I do believe a environmental assessment was done on the property. I do believe, I don't have all those, that information right at my fingertips, but I, you know, probably the usual of lead, asbestos, those types of things in a building of that age. And also the site, the property that we own is 16.74 acres of land.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Okay. And then?
You mean, Mr. Reiner?
No, Mr. Dunn just popped that up in the chat.
Okay.
And we have exhausted that the town doesn't need this property for anything at this time? Is that correct?
That's the input that we've gotten from the town council and others at this point in time, as well as, you know, with it having the school on the property now, and that's also the purpose of the public hearing, to get additional input on whether or not the property is, should be sold.
Gotcha. And then my last question is, do we have to sell that, is looking at that, is it crucial that we sell all 16.74 or is there a way to parcel that up if we had to?
We certainly could parcel it up if we needed to, but the RFP that we put out there was for 16.74 acres. That was the general direction that we'd received. So, you know, as we get into discussions and negotiations with any particular developer, if there are, you know, other things, amenities, whatever, you know, we're looking for on the site, those are things that we can discuss.
Okay. No, I was just asking from a town's perspective, like, you know, it might be that the undeveloped section, we might want to keep like two acres and keep it undeveloped and, you know, plant and keep it as a buffer depending on what the environmental impacts on that area since it's in an industrial area. So I was just curious. All right. Well, thank you for answering the questions.
You're welcome. And thank you also to Larry Dunn for putting that 16.7 acres up on the chat. Thank you. Sorry, I thought you were referring to me and then he helped me with that. So thanks.
I just wanted to make a note that Counselor Heed has joined us. It is 8:00, it was 8:09 when Counselor Heed came in, so we are now eight counselors. Counselor Heed, we are on 2021 103 Pleasant Valley School Property Sales Scheduling the Public Hearing. So we'll be coming up for a vote shortly on that. Did you have any questions on that item, Counselor Heed?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'm not seeing any hands, so I think we're good to go. So we will vote on 2021 103 Pleasant Valley School Property Sale Schedule Public Hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We are on to 2020 8061 Resilience and Sustainability Report. This began on page 21 and we have the members of the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force with us this evening. Thank you for coming out. I just wanted to introduce the item and then I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Stever and his team. The, the purpose of this item tonight, the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force is looking to the council to prioritize among three items that they've given us. They were here earlier, a couple of months ago, maybe, maybe a month or so ago, and they ask for us to offer questions to them and I don't believe that they received any. So they've come back to us with three items, health impacts, energy and carbon footprint, or coastal and inland flooding. And what they would like to hear from you tonight is which of those three items, would you like them to focus on first? So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over for Mr. Stever to introduce these items. He has all the members of his team here. So if you have questions in trying to decide which you think is the most important, it would be a great time to ask because all the experts are here with us this evening. So what we'll be doing after Mr. Stever presents is I'm going to be looking for consensus from the council on which items that you wish them to devote the bulk of their energy to at this time. Okay? That's not to say it won't change later, but it's important that we give them direction so that they are not just kind of paddling, right? So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Stever. Counselor Franco, I see your hand. Yes, dear?
Could we take a very quick break here? Because we're almost running on two hours and I think their presentation might, you know, might take some time and the one after that is going to take some time. Can we just take a quick five-minute break?
You'd like a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Is there any objection to a five-minute recess? Okay, we'll be back at 8:18. Floor over to Mr. Stever. Where'd Zell go? I saw Zell.
Here I am.
There you are. I think you have the ability to screen share if you intended to share anything.
Yes, I will want to share some stuff in a minute. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, the town manager and the clerk. We're here tonight, we were with, before you back in December, and you have in front of you four documents that we had sent to you in advance. And so those are, hopefully you had a chance to read them. I am going to spend a couple of minutes on the first document and so I will go from here to screen sharing. Just to be clear, the documents are the information that the mayor had suggested up for discussion that will be held immediately after I finish this little first session. So just so you all know. So let me try to screen share here. Do we?
Got it.
You got it?
Yep.
Okay. I got my screen all messed up here, so I've got to get to it. There we go. Okay. So we sent you a, a, a letter, which basically a three-page letter that talked about what we've been up to and what we need to do to go forward. And so there are three sort of overarching activities that we believe the council needs to tackle before, a whole lot's going to happen on resiliency, the whole issue of climate change and there is follows. The first is that we believe that we're going to have to have a vision, which we believe is a resolution that you need to pass that will basically be a central organizing principle for planning and management for all town activities going forward. And we are happy to help you prepare and write that. The second is that, and that is the capacity, as we have already said and you have already discussed, a capacity to actually deliver on what that vision is, and that is the full-time person within the manager's office, a senior-level climate manager. And then finally, in order to make something happen, that will require resources and as we've all talked about, that's going to have to be some upfront, upfront funding from either the, completely from the town or from a combination of the town and the city. And the expectation is that a great deal of money would be brought in through grants applied for both at the state and at the, the federal level. And so that's the first point. The second point is that we basically, in, under that structure, we have two things that we have to do in the community over the long haul. One is to reduce our carbon footprint, which is energy conservation, energy efficiency, insulating our buildings and using electric equipment and vehicles where we possibly can do it. Obviously, you, you've talked about some of these matters tonight with the school. We, as you know, had submitted to you a year ago that we had requested that solar panels be placed on the new middle school. And then in terms of making the community more resilient to already in, in the ground or on the, in the air, climate change, what are the, what are the things that we need to make more resilient? And that is, how do we protect the community from climate change going forward? It includes the things like drinking water, protecting. protecting our native woodlands and wetlands, building above the flood zone, moving our infrastructure above the flood zone. And then finally, if we do do those two things well, that gets us to a place where we're going to basically be sustainable. In other words, if we embrace the first two, that will in time make or have the city or have the town become a more sustainable, sustainable community. And our general feeling is, is that we first begin with the public sector, that is the town itself. And then followed by working with or taking on the private sector in the next step. And part of that would be is that if we can show the community that we can do it at the town level, that is, for example, putting solar panels and they work and save us money, then the public will also understand that that may be a very important thing to do for themselves. But we think that a first and second step will be important. So at this point, I'm going to then say that we're here to talk about the first three, the fourth transportation alternatives. In a conversation with the mayor, we have decided not to have that conversation. So at this point, I would like to entertain your questions and entertain your discussions. And I'll simply show you one other slide here and then I'm going to get offline with you. But this is the hundred-year flood comparison. If you see in the upper part on the, the left side of your screen, you see Groton Long Point. And then you put the hundred fear flood above on it and you see all the blue that's filled in there and you see how many houses go underwater. If you look in the others, on the right side of the screen, you see downtown Mystic. And what you see there is on the, the left of those two, the green area right above the bridge. And then on the right side, you see how much flooding will take place. Now, this is a hundred-year flood comparison and I simply bring that to your attention because this is what we're, one of the things that we're likely to be being faced with going forward. So I'm going to stop sharing stream, screens and go back to the regular system here. Let me see if I've got that right. I guess I do. Can you still hear me?
We can.
Okay, so why don't we get into the question and answer period? You have those three documents that we've submitted. One is on health, one is on energy efficiency, and the last one is on the coastal issues. And all of our members are here, Jesse Stratton, Frank Boland, Sarah Kelly, Victor Valagra, Maggie, Maggie Jones, and I got everybody here, and Mickey Weiss. I think that's got the crew. So, Madam Mayor, it's your call.
Okay, I just, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stever. I just wanted to say when, when Mr. Stever and I talked about how to approach this tonight. And I said, let's leave the transportation issue off of this for tonight because we just recently issued a letter of support for one of the proposals coming out of the resilience task force for expanding train service. So we've kind of already tackled that one and we're, we're, I feel like we're moving forward on that in that regard. And that is actually a bill now that is being taken up in the General Assembly. Thank you to our state delegation for doing so. So that's why I chose to leave that one off. So then that leaves us with three items here. And we'll open up the floor now if councillors have questions. And remember again, the goal tonight is to come to some kind of consensus as to which direction we would like the task force to move. Oh, I got to say one other thing before we start discussing. Mr. Burt, you're with us, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the, the sustainability manager position is being put into the budget this year?
Yes, it is in my draft version of the budget.
So then that, that item is kind of ticked off on the list as well. So we've got, we've, we've taken some action on transportation and we're making steps forward to get that position for the town. So again, just let's, let's kind of guide our discussion to be able to come to a consensus for the task force tonight. So would anybody like to start? Do you have questions or do you want to just offer your opinion on to which of the three items you would like them to be focusing on? Councillor Baumgartner and then Aubrey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I will be brief, just given the the significant interest of our council on this very topic. And thank you, Mr. Stever, for your presentation. My question has more to do with the kind of as, you know, now your group has met in, over the last sixteen months. And you have tackled issues relating to transportation as well as, you know, the sort of other areas you outlined. Obviously, the pandemic exposed, you know, that many folks, that there are sort of structural inequities, not just within our community, but throughout our state and the world. And my question is, as you've studied the issue of resiliency here in Groton, have you identified sort of issues of inequities or addressing the issue of equity for, you know, more or in how some of our more marginalized communities or communities that do not sort of have the financial capacity to, you know, to, whether it's, you know, case in point, you know, Paquonic Bridge, for example, you know, if you, you look at the demographics of Paquonic Bridge, certainly an area that, you know, a far more working-class neighborhood and economically diverse, racially diverse, but very much vulnerable to those rising sea levels. So how does a community like Paquonic Bridge is, deal with the impacts of the twenty-inch level sea, twenty-inch sea level rise by 2050 as compared to some of the other neighborhoods within Groton? And when it comes to a resource, issues of resource allocation, do you believe that the, you know, this task force is equipped with the tools and resources to tackle those issues? Or is there areas where the town can kind of step up and assist in that respect as well?
Well, let me take a crack at that first. First of all, we have to treat, the task force has to treat the town as, as its entirety. And then we realize there may be subsections within that, but in terms of deciding what resources go where, that's clearly in the, in the ballpark of the town council, I think. Victor, do you want to talk about what you've learned about the whole issue of this type of community? And then Frank, maybe you'll follow up with that? Victor?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. And Mr. Baumgartner, this, this is a critical question. And I'm not going to belabor the, the impact that we've seen of COVID-19 on the disproportionate impact, impact on morbidity and mortality on especially people of color, low income, et cetera. So your question is, is extremely appropriate. There is a social vulnerability in Connecticut that, that is not new. It has been measured. It has been, it has been indexed. It's called the social vulnerability index. The Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, this is, the CDC and other agencies develop what they refer to the social vulnerability index, which was specifically developed to help local officials like you identify communities that may need support in preparing for hazards or recovering from disasters. And there, this, this information is available for our region. We submitted a, a brief summary of the high vulnerability areas. It covers household composition and disability, for example, people aged sixty-five and older, minority status and language, English-speaking, multi-unit structures in terms of housing and transportation, unemployment, income, no high school diploma. All these factors that I mentioned have been factored. Now, the, the, the critical part for the town is to act on this. And acting on this means that resources have to be allocated preferentially to communities in areas in town that are at highest risk because of all these very well-indexed and measured parameters. That means that at the time of a climate-induced event, it can be a hurricane, it could be another pandemic, it can be extreme heat or other extreme temperatures, their resources, their resource allocation cannot be even. Their resource allocation has to be proportionately greater for people in communities of higher responsibility. We're giving you the map, we're giving you the data, and I think you will be in a perfect position to make the decisions regarding allocation. And also needs, preparation has to anticipate that some of these parts of town and community, of our community are going to need greater degrees of preparation, education, but ultimately, resources.
Thank you very much, Doctor, and I fully support your recommendations as, as outlined in the proposal.
Mr. Councillor Baumgartner, Frank Boland might want to speak to whether that community is going to be likely flooded during the hundred-year storm.
Yeah, good evening. The, when we first started this, we saw some earlier work, I believe, by the Nature Conservancy that registered that area as being particularly vulnerable to flooding. We did not find that, to make the long story short. The, and that's why that area is not included in our high sensitivity, the critical areas that we define. I think if, in a nutshell, in the interest of time, that relative to the social impact, the effect of heat on health, maybe water quality, drinking water supplies and the quality of it. The problem with flooding during even the hundred-year plus twenty inches, which is a figure that you were looking at, is secondary. I think the other one is, you're probably more liable in that area to blow the roofs off the houses than to flood them.
Councillor Baumgartner, you had some time left if you wanted to speak any further, sir.
I see a lot of hands, so I will, I will yield the time and thank you again to this, this task force for your hard work.
So just, just to kind of clarify, your concern then is the coastal inland flooding and the health or which, if you had to choose one of the three, which one would you like them to focus on? Or how would you prioritize them?
Well, I think in the short term, given, given the pandemic, certainly health is, would be timely. Certainly, you know, long-term, absolutely coastal inland health and, you know, the resiliency of our, of our coastline.
Thank you. All right, so I saw councillor, I've seen Aubrey, Melendez, Heed and Zeperry have their hands up. So you are all in the queue. Councillor Aubrey is next, though.
Okay. I, I think that, I'm happy to hear you say that you didn't think that the Paquonic Bridge was too vulnerable to flooding because both our sewage disposal plant and our water plants are down in that area. And those are the ones that I feel, I think we should be doing number two. Protecting our drinking water and protecting our native, well, woodlands, I'm not so worried about, but I know you are. But I think that this particular one should be the first to approach. They're all important, certainly. But I think from the events we've been watching, drinking water has become a very serious problem, no matter whether it's Florida, California or where. They all seem to immediately lose their water. And so I would think that that would be a very good first step. You know, when we're looking at the areas though, too, you want to remember that, because I call them Fort Hill homes. The Fort Hill home area across the water is Jupiter Point, Baker's Point and so forth. And they're going to be, I think, more impacted by the high water coming higher. But I really think that number two is of a more urgent nature in order to prepare Groton for the future. So fortunately, having our own water company, there would be entities, people to work with and, and be able to really propose some good ways to make changes. So, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Burt, just to clarify, did, did staff figure out if the chat is being captured?
They were still working on it. Another department was having the same issue, so they're still working on it. So I don't trust it.
Right. Okay, thank you. So then we have councillor Melendez next, please.
Could I make a correction? I, I think here it's saying, I think water contamination is number one, not two. I was just referring to the number as they're listed. I think it is number one.
So you're interested in the health impacts where drinking water is included as a health impact?
Thank you. Thank you, Juan.
Thank you. So councillor Melendez, you're next, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I look at this list, you know, they're all extremely important and it's very difficult to choose among them. I mean, I think the whole world as a whole, number two, reducing the carbon footprint is probably the best strategy going forward. But as, as from our perspective as a council and living in a coastal town, I think our primary job should be to protect our vulnerabilities, our vulnerable coastlines. We can see that we have our whole coastline, downtown Mystic, many residential properties that will be affected by the coming crisis. So I think just from our perspective, I think we should still obviously do everything we can to reduce our carbon footprint and and reduce the effects of the health of the climate change. But from our perspective as a council, I think we need to protect our coastline. I think that's most immediate to us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Melendez. Councillor Heed is next.
Sure. Let me kind of direct this more so towards John. You know, as I'm reading through the information here, there are, some of the points are like hurricanes and extreme temperature events, water contamination, you know, one assumes that there's a storm surge of some sort. A lot of this sounds like disaster relief. So I'm wondering, you know, some of it's going to come into Legislative Health District or coordinating with our Public Works or Public Safety. How much of this is planning and how much is like disaster relief? And if, John, if you are the staff, look at this, where is the staff lacking? Where would the expertise really help them to sort of circle the square, so to speak? And maybe help them better prepare for, for some of the events that might happen as well as, you know, do, or do you need more help in the, the area of like carbon footprint reduction?
Well, to me, I, I agree to the comment about maybe number three being the most important. However, with, with staff we have in place as well as the possible resilience position, I think we're, you know, suited, you know, pretty well-suited to be tackling that and taking, you know, taking a lot of that on. Same thing with energy and carbon footprint. We will have some expertise in place. I think in terms of town staff, the health impacts, you know, we, outside, I can't speak for legislative in terms of town proper, you know, that's where our staff would be lacking. But they're all very important, so it's a hard decision.
All right, I see Walter Boland wants to answer. Speak up, Mayor, if you want to let him. I will step aside.
I don't mean you to step aside, councillor. I'm just one, one of the things that we really are looking at and trying to establish the groundwork to prevent is disaster. We don't want to wait till it happens. We'd like it, we'd like the actions to get started as difficult as they are. And that's what that floating fund that's down on the bottom of Zell's list is all about. You get started now, you walk. But we look at places, pick a name, the West Beach in Groton Long Point, Victoria Beach. And you look at the potential for flooding in that area and the loss, what that means in terms of loss of revenue, hopefully not loss of life. And you begin now to raise the houses, make the area more resilient. So that if we do run into the hundred year event or something like it, some of these 50 year events are plenty energetic. You have reduced significantly the potential for damage.
I, I would have to second that, that, that I think it's really about how, what can we do now to, to prevent, which makes the community more resilient. And we have, as, as I think Frank has laid out, seven or eight areas along the coastline where it's clear that we really shouldn't have any more development take place. Now, that, you're, you're picking a very, very tough issue to take on. I mean, there has been just over the last three or four years in the, in the Willow Point area, some development has taken place, they've filled it, they've put these big buildings up there, and that's fine. The buildings are above the flood zone. But the problem is that if you have to get a vehicle in there, you can't do it. And so then you're putting people at risk, essentially. And you, all you have to do is go back to the well documented events of 1938 to begin to understand exactly what this means. If we have 100 mile an hour or 120 mile an hour wind coming through here, we're going to really have a problem in this community. And it's just, what can we do now to, to prepare for that, to prevent it from having even a worse impact?
So Counselor Heed, you have, you have time left. Did you want to continue?
I know, actually, I'll come back.
Okay.
Back to you later.
All right, very good. Next is Counselor Zeperry.
I don't know that you can really say one thing is more important than the other. I am grateful to all of you for the work you've done to actually categorize this into three different areas. I'm sure that there, there might be more. But I would say, you know, for reducing our carbon footprint, I think that may be an easier plan than trying to stave off flooding. And I understand that your attitude for resiliency in the flood areas is to raise the real estate, raise the houses rather than prevent the water from coming in. But I, I, and I also am concerned about water quality and preserving water quality. And I would agree with Counselor Aubrey that that's probably our number one consideration. In that regard, I wonder if you've looked at the concern for a significant segment of our, at least geographically, a significant segment of our town, I don't know what it is population wise, people who rely on well water. Now, well water, even in ordinary times, is becoming more and more of a risk for the population. I, I only come across two studies, one in Wisconsin and one in Pennsylvania, where they studied wells and throughout a county and came up with something that astounded me that 50% of them were contaminated by coliform bacteria. That's, that's disconcerting. I think there's a safety issue there. And, and we ought to look at it and see what we can do, one, to protect the wells and two, to extend our municipal water supply to those areas. So those are things that I would, I, I would think that we would look at. And I think it's only responsible for us to reduce our carbon input. Now, the carbon, carbon footprint for Groton compared to the whole world is probably pretty small. And the effect that we're going to have by improving our, our carbon footprint in Groton is negligible. However, we have to do our part. This is only going to succeed if everyone does his part. And we do have to address this very seriously. So I think getting to reduce carbon emissions is, is an important aspect. I, I'm also concerned, and I'd like you to share my concern, to the fact, by the fact that this council and the councils that follow us are not only concerned with resiliency, but with many other factors in government and have to divide resources and, and have to recognize that we don't have unlimited resources. And we'll have to divide resources among many things. So when it comes to having battery operated vehicles versus traditionally powered vehicles at the current rate of cost, it may be difficult for the town to, to extend entirely in that direction. I think we have to start moving. I don't think we can do it all at once. And this commission, this task force has, is comprised of the, the best piece of people we could possibly get for it. And I'd like to congratulate you on your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zeperry. So then your concerns are in the health issue as far as water quality?
That's number one, but I think that we have to follow through on the others as well. It's not say, hey, we're just going to do this and we're going to be good. We're not. We have to do it all.
Yes. All right.
And we have to do it cheaply.
Yes. You're muted, Jesse.
Yeah, you need to unmute, Jesse.
So I would just say, I think, number one, I love people's comments. With all due respect, I don't think Task Force did tonight was to say, here are your choices. We as a task force think all of these things need to happen. They are, it's not a zero sum game. They are all part of responding to the challenge before us. But as a coastal community, a riverine community, I think what Frank has laid out is probably the most, what am I going to say? Imperative thing to address. It is sea level rise and probably what Victor and Sarah did in terms of health impacts. You know, Counselor Zampiri is absolutely right. Energy efficiency and all those kinds of things that help us reduce our carbon footprint are part of us being a part of the solution. They are not going to move the needle. But in terms of our population, sea level rise and health impacts are really right there. We need to address them. And I think the challenge to the town council right now is not what do you want us as a task force to do, but what are you willing to do?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for stating it in that way. I appreciate that. So we have Counselor Bordelain, who would like to speak.
Thank you. Thank you so much for submitting all these, this work that you've put together and before us. I just think it's really important. As you know, I support coastal conservation and resilience and sustainability in the, in our town. It's long overdue and definitely needs to be studied, watched and, and definitely have a plan. Looking at the three, as, you know, Jesse so nicely stated, it's, these are the three ideas, what does the council want to do? Looking at these, I think one and three are kind of one and the same for me. I think you cannot have coastal inland flooding without talking about the health impacts of the changing climate. I know with hurricane, I believe it was, I don't remember, was it Sandy? I believe, is that true, John, that our sewage plant discharged, correct? With the, the flood? I remember the report on that. Is that correct?
I'm not sure, actually, off the top of my head.
I know it was, when, it was true in New Jersey, big time.
Yeah, well, ours did discharge. I guess some of those items, I know when I did my tour down there not that long ago, a couple of years ago, and I was with, I believe, Moderator Evan, and they were talking about the discharge, and I remember looking at the report on that at the time. And that, that's a concern. And so I'm shocked to hear honestly that Paquonic Bridge is not necessarily in a flood zone, knowing that, that sewage plant has discharged. So I look at the health impacts, if that was to continue to happen with housing close to that area as a major concern as well. Also, looking adjacent to that at the airport, that is, you know, there's a flood marker there that floods right there at the mouth of Paquonic Bridge. So that, that definitely is in a, in a flood zone. As we speak tonight, when we speak about the coastal houses and raising them up and all of that, that obviously is definitely a concern as well. But how do we, how do we achieve that without the, you know, I know as Zell said tonight, you know, maybe no more building in some of those areas. And then helping maybe down the road, get all the other houses up to code, which would take some time. But Paquonic Bridge, from my assessment and things that I've read with the airport and the discharge of the sewage plant next to it is definitely a health concern. So one and three to me are definitely concerns. I feel like they're one and the same. As coastal flooding, inland flooding continues, you have problems with drinking water, more sewage discharge happening. And the infrastructure, when I was down at our sewage plant, you know, they, they had gotten the, the monies to start doing some reconstruction down there, but there definitely is a push or need to make sure that our infrastructure in those areas are definitely improved. Also, to Counselor Zepiri's point, I know West Mystic, they're still drinking out of a lot of wells. There's not even pipeline run all the way out there. Folks do not have access if these wells were to be breached out in that area. And I know people in District Five have spoke of this as a concern for them as well. So I think there's a lot here, and also the carbon footprint. I think they're all really great ideas. And I mean, I'm willing to go with the council any of these directions. I think they're all very important and very needed issues. But one and three for me would probably be my one, because I kind of see them as a joint issue, especially being a coastal community. And then two is something of the carbon neutral thing that we can work on in the footprint. With that, the hard part, as you know, Jesse stated tonight, what will the council do? Unfortunately, you know, we're elected and it's two year terms. And so it's really hard because we as one council can want to go for all three of these, as I think they're all very important. But the problem is, is the direction later could change. So it's a really tough, ever evolving. So how do we, as a town, set priorities that can stick, is the next question. And I think having that resilience and sustainability person in house that's non-elected, that's kind of looking at the problem as a whole, as, as other people may come and go in different positions, would be helpful. I would seem to think, and having this task force to be a support to whoever would fill that position would be very helpful. And I think having this committee, which I appreciate the work that you guys do, does give a lot of continuity to the town, because you guys are the, the people that are looking at it as a whole. And other folks in our town could change. But I was curious as to...
Counselor Bordelain, your time is up.
I was going to ask one question, if you...
All right, go for it, but you've, you've gone over.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping track of my time. What do we do and where, where does this committee, these are the three, I guess, my question back to them, I think they're all three important, and I think one and three would be, where, where, what direction would you guys see going forward if there was, I mean, we're being asked to pick our top one. If they had one, where, where would your top one be, is my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stever, did you want to take that, speaking as the Chair of the group? That's a hard question. I understand.
You probably, well, yes, I'll be happy to take a crack at that. What I've, what we basically said is if you don't have three, the three issues that we raised in our letter in place, I think we really feel that you can't make a whole lot of progress. You've got to have, the council, I think, can do this. You need to put together a resolution that's saying, going forward, it is our ongoing interest in having resiliency, sustainability, and climate change as an ongoing matter that we must consider whenever we take any action. And, and it's a simple resolution. Now, it has to be carefully set forth. If you do that, then future councils, future boards and commissions will then have to be responsible for it. It's much like at the national level, the National Environmental Policy Act, all agencies have to comply with it. And it's gone through now almost 50 years, and it hasn't been repealed, and it actually works very effectively. You're well on the way to having a full-time person. And just the list, as I listened to, and I've been writing this down, the list you have here, this has to be basically embedded in the, the, the government of the town of Groton. You have to have people, have to have a person in there who does look for the grants. So there is an extraordinary amount of money out there right now available for communities if they simply apply for it. But then you've got to figure out what you, what it is you have to do to actually get, if you get the grant, you've got to actually do something about it. And that means people have to be redirected and so forth. And then the final part is that, I mean, some of this stuff, and this goes to the issue of the, reducing the carbon footprint, you'll save money. If you put, for example, solar panels on the schools, that will reduce your electric bill and you will save money. And you can take the savings from that kind of a operation and plug it into doing the next project. And so it, it's not all negative. It, it actually, if we end up doing this correctly, it could be, provide a lot of opportunity for our community. And I think one has to think of it in terms of, what are these opportunities ahead? So that's, that's sort of my, my view. I think those things that deal with energy efficiency, carbon footprint, there's a fair number of state programs already available that we're not taking advantage of. That's an easy way to get started. I think as Victor and Sarah have suggested, the health impacts are a bit more complicated because of the way we're structured in the state with these health districts. And I think we can make good progress on beginning on the coastal inland flooding, starting with such things as simply getting appropriate signs, appropriate locations with plaques on them saying why the signs are there, what they mean. And it'll get the public to begin to understand what the nature of the threat is that we're, we're facing. And so it all, it all goes together as a package, as I see it. And it's a matter of, I think, the hard part will be, I think, from a financial point of view, is getting a person on board. I think a resolution for, this is a much easier part. I think setting up a revolving fund is also a fairly easy part of this process.
Thank you. Okay. I am going to take my turn now. And then we have second time speakers, if Counselor Franco doesn't wish to speak at this time. So I would say, I agree that all three are important. I don't know how you choose one. I do agree that at some point, we need to come up with a guiding principle and adopt a resolution that we can leave, that will, you know, it will help the person who's hired in the position of the manager, if we adopt a resolution with these guiding principles. I think the council needs to do that. I agree. As far as the three items, I, I think the health and the energy are the two that were important to me. I understand, you know, the third is vitally important as well. But I think, given the circumstances and the current threats that we're having, dealing with the health impacts would be a good way to start. Once the resilience manager comes on board, then they can start looking at, if we adopt this resolution, then they can start looking at the overall impact of all the departments as far as the energy and the carbon footprint goes. The coastal, the flooding issues are huge and they seem so daunting. And it's, it's, where do you even begin, right? And so I'm not sure how we begin. But, you know, if we have this professional on staff and we have you working on that, then you can kind of kickstart us and get us going on that. Because it's, it's very difficult to think of all the obstacles that we're up against, surrounded on three sides by water. I don't, I don't know. You know, I don't know where to start with that. So I would say, I would, I would choose to work on... So I would say I would, I would choose to work on the health impacts as probably, you know, going forward is more the most immediate thing to, to deal with those. And those would include the water quality issues that Counselor O'Bree and Counselors Zepary both spoke of. Okay, Counselor Franco, I have second time hands. Did you wish to speak?
No, you can continue. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez, you can speak for a second time if you'd like, sir.
Thank you. Okay, just a clarifying question. I mean, I think we all are in agreement that we have to do all three as a town. But are you, are you coming to us today to ask which of the three we want you to focus on and we'll do the other two? Or is that the question at hand?
I, I think they want us to pick which ones are important to us. And then we will tell that to them and then we'll all kind of work together on it, if I'm not mistaken. Ms. Stratton?
Jesse, need to unmute.
Oh, yeah.
I not to, so I don't think this is an either, either or presentation by the task force. They are all equally important. And I think when I've listened to some of the comments about how the task force might work with the town council and others in the town moving forward, I can't speak for other task force members, but I think we are more than happy. We are, we are invested in this. We would be happy to help direct the town. But it's not like you can say, oh, we're not going to worry about sea level rise. We're not going to worry about health and human, I mean, it's, it is an overwhelming issue that necessitates being addressed on all of those fronts. The task force is a volunteer task force, as you are too. And I fully appreciate and applaud you for that. But we cannot develop and propose and put into effect policy. You can. And so I think as we have tried to laid out, lay out for you, these are the issues we think you as a town council must address if you really want to address climate change, resiliency and sustainability. And it's not like, oh, let's work on this one and we'll forget the others. I, I speak for myself here saying I am more than happy to work with town staff and others on the town council or anything else, trying to figure out how we do that going forward. But you as a town council and as a town have to be invested in it or it's not going to happen. We can't make it happen as a task force. I hope that's not too blunt.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I, I guess I'd also, I think, I, I think, and all the members of the task force can speak up. We've talked about this and I think we generally are in full agreement about that we have to work on all of this going forward and that we can help as advisors essentially. But we can't be expected to go out there and, and run the trap lines, as they say, on all these things. I mean, we're already doing some of this already. For example, Frank's been sitting on the Grodd and Long Point Bridge Group and that's moving along very slowly. But it, it is, it is making some progress. So I, I, I think we can provide some good resources. But there's the old saying along the waterfront, you're either gonna fish or cut bait. And I think we're suggesting that we got to go fishing.
Okay, so Counselor He, do you ask us to circle back to you?
Oh, no, I said you could circle back to me.
I'm circling back to you. Do you wish to, do you wish to offer an opinion as to what you think our council's focus should be?
No, I, I think there's a difference between what was put on in the packet, you know, choose one versus what we're hearing from the, the commission. And, you know, I'm, I, we put them in, in place to advise us and they're giving us advice. And I think it's solid advice. We should take it.
So, so what do you think the council's focus should be?
That, well, there's that question that came back. And their suggestion is you can't focus on one. You should be focusing on all of it, adopt the resolution and move forward, like with a statement for, for the town, the direction you want to take the town. So that's the way that I think we should go.
So put in place, work on a resolution in conjunction with getting the manager hired and then have the manager kind of do across the board, looking at the whole town, moving forward on all of these issues.
Absolutely. That, that's why we're paying these guys the big bucks.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Okay, Dr. Vilager and, and Dr., Mr. Weiss. We'll let you go first since Dr. Vilager spoke already.
I just think that perhaps the word prioritize has been somewhat misunderstood in that we are not suggesting that you select a priority amongst the three things that we presented. We are suggesting that you prior, prioritize all of them.
Thank you. And Dr. Vilager, did you wish to speak again?
Yeah, I'd just like to emphasize something that Mr. Stever pointed out. It's not a bullet point, but if there is not, if there's not funding to support some of these initiatives, I think Counselor Zepari just stated it very clearly. You have other responsibilities, you have other obligations. And if there is no budget, there is no mission. And I think a bullet point priority that is part of the resilience and sustainability plan is to bring money into our town. And I think a laser focus on going after these grants is going to energize one or another initiative. But if that part is not given a top priority at the outset of the execution phase of this proposal, we're, I mean, we are full of good intentions and you have good intentions. And you're, you're seeing that all the items that are listed are intimately interrelated. So the notion of treating them as separate discreet initiatives is, is folly. It's, it's simply, it's simply conceptually not workable. So concentrate a lot on finding sources of funding. We can continue to cooperate, collaborate with you and, and crafting some of that, some of those grants, but we cannot do it. So I would, I would say that is a bullet point top priority.
Thank you. With that, I'd like counsel to direct your attention to page 22 of your packet, please. The last item on page 22. And I move that the council adopt a resolution addressing climate change, resiliency and sustainability as a central organizing, planning and management principle for all actions of the town government.
Second, Baumgartner.
Did you put that out?
It is, we're, we're not to use the chat. That's why I referred you to the page. Give me one second and I will- Do, 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 do. I can't. Mr. Burt, are you able to share page 22 of the packet?
I, I have it. That's all right. I have it in front of me.
I can read it again. It's the, the last item. It says number one, it's on page 22. And I move to adopt a resolution addressing climate change, resiliency and sustainability as a central organizing, planning and management principle for all actions of the town government. And that was seconded by Baumgartner.
You think that says enough?
I think what we need to do is it needs to be worked, fleshed out. This, this is just to get us to the point where we're going to write a resolution. And I believe Mr. Stever said they would help us write that resolution. So this just kind of kicks us in the pants and gets us going.
Good.
Counselor, that's the purpose of doing this. So Counselor Bordelain, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you. I think that's great, but I, I guess I was confused because when we started this discussion, the direction you had stated is for us to choose one. I just want to clarify, right? So the reason we were picking is not for lack of not thinking all three were important. It was the Russian that we were initially asked at the beginning was prioritize which one you pick as your priority. So I know that some people have spoke tonight and said, well, they're all three and that's why I was having trouble picking. But that was the direction we were asked at the beginning. Was that correct or I'm confused?
That is what I asked.
To pick one that we felt was our priority.
Yes.
Okay. I'll yield the floor for now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Counselor Franco?
I appreciate the presentation tonight and I think this is very important for our town. I don't think as a council, we are prepared to adopt a resolution at this moment because we have honestly not even discussed that we're having a resolution tonight at all. And there's questions in relation to how the resolution would impact economic development and how it would be in relation to other things in our town and like how decisions are going to be made. I mean, it's a very generalized statement that could be taken in many, many different ways. And I don't think just a sentence is going to solve anything or how it's going to help when we bring on somebody. I, I just don't understand what this resolution is going to do other than to tell, adopt a resolution addressing climate change, resiliency and sustainability as a central organizing, planning and management principle for all actions of the town government, which means we are going to have to have them in every aspect of our government. So I'm just not understanding how that's going to relate to everything we do. And we have not had that discussion. So I don't think we're actually prepared to move forward with that at the moment. And we, we haven't even hired anybody to ask them what the person we hire, what their thoughts are on this matter. So I, I just don't know how, what we're doing right now, other than just making a statement. And are we going to figure out later on how we're going to make that happen? I'm not exactly sure. I, I get that this committee wants us all on board. But there's like numerous questions now. And as it's been stated, this is a very huge, huge issue. And it was sort of presented tonight like we were going to pick a priority. And actually, they're explaining that they're all priorities and we don't have to pick, that they're, they are all just basically priorities and they want them to be our priorities. And I, I just don't know how, why this is being put on there tonight and to be made a resolution and the outcome of it. So I'm just not quite in agreement with the resolution tonight. Thank you.
We have Counselors Zepary, Melendez and O'Bree. Counselors Zepary, you wish to speak?
I think that this is an important resolution. It's, it's taking a position, in a position that we have to elevate our concern for, for sustainability and resiliency to a higher level. Climate change has reached a crisis point in our whole world. Species are being lost. Flooding is occurring, enormous storms. We can expect that we're going to have flooding at the, to the extent that Mr. Stever has pointed out in his floodplain maps. I, I, I don't think we can bury our heads in the sand about this. We have to make it a priority concern as we make decisions in development of the town. For instance, it should have been a concern when we were building schools that we put renewable light, uh, power sources on the roofs of those schools. We did not. We did not have the advice of a resiliency czar, if you will, who would, would guide us in that regard and what we can do. We have to reduce our carbon footprint. We have to protect our water supply. And we have to do whatever we can to provide, to encourage property owners to elevate their structures on their properties. There's no way to prevent the flooding over their land. I mean, we're not going to build levees up and down the Mystic River and all around the town. And if there's no levy, the water's going to come in. When, when, when the water's up, it's coming in. What we can do is to make our structures so they can survive a storm. And we can do that in a number of ways as we're encouraging, as we're, for instance, as we're encouraging economic development with tax incentives, we could develop tax incentives for people to make their homes resistant to flooding, either by elevating them or by strengthening their seawalls, whatever. The projects that we could determine along the way with the guidance of our, our resiliency chairman. I, I think there's a lot we can do, but what we're doing to here today by this motion is to say this is a major consideration. We can't put our heads in the sand and we can't delay making this a priority. And that's all we're doing with this resolution. I'm strongly in favor. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, Ms. Jones.
Yeah, sorry. I don't know how to raise my, my little hand icon. But thank you so much, Mr. Zepary. Very well said. And I think really just to, you know, I, I think it was, I don't know if misguided is the right word, but initially trying to pick one because it truly is overwhelming. And I think you guys have been wrestling with this and it's, it's helped, I think, just set the stage and, and inform our committee, speaking for myself, but exactly where we stand. And I think this resolution, as broad as it is and as perhaps overwhelming as it may seem to some of the council members, it really is an important first step. It sets an intention for the town. You guys are, you know, as the leader, setting an intention. And it helps make sort of the whole sustainability culture part of the town. This, this culture change really kind of gets the ball rolling and I think it's critical. It doesn't, you know, I, I think beautifully said by Mr. Zepary. So just that, that's all.
Thank you. Counselor Melendez, I think is who I had next. Counselor Melendez.
Okay, I apologize for misunderstanding your whole purpose for being here today. I, I am much happier with, with, with the way things turned out. So basically, just to summarize for everyone, maybe who doesn't have the papers in front of them, you are recommending to us to take these three actions. First, to sort of adopt the resolution, saying that this is a big priority for us. Then second, to hire someone who specifically works on this full-time at an executive level. And then third, sort of put our money where our mouth is and fund what we need to fund in order to go forward. That, that's what you are recommending to us? Is that your whole purpose here today?
I, I think that, that's correct. I, I think the last one is, is establishing a revolving fund. It's a little different mechanism because that way you can take advantage of savings. You also can take advantage of grants and put that in that fund. It, it, it's a way of measuring your, your financial input and the results of, of this. I, I have to say that I think this whole issue is, it's going to provide some just enormous opportunities for the community. It's, I mean, it has, it does have some, provides some limitations on some of the things that we've been doing in the past. But it has just huge financial upsides to it going forward. So I, I, I think that's correct.
Okay. Jesse, do you need to say something?
You're muted, Jesse.
Jesse, you need to unmute.
So sorry, last year, the General Assembly passed a bill enabling towns to create funds to be available to provide matching funds, whatever else for resiliency and climate change. So I think this is what that's directed at. It doesn't have to be a whole lot of money, but as John and Patrice and others know, when you go to apply for federal grants, most of them need matching funds from some local source. Sometimes that can be the state and sometimes it needs to be the municipality. So that is what this is directed at.
Okay, thank you. I, I like this plan. Thank you guys for bringing it to us. I will be supporting the first step tonight and I hope that two and three will come soon after. Thank you.
And I have Counselor Obray next. Did you still wish to speak, Counselor Obray?
Yes, I think what's bothering Rachel, and I don't want to speak for her, but is the word resolution. But resolution doesn't mean that it's permanent. It just means that you're firm in your decision to move forward. So I think that if we took one, two and three and made them into a permanent adoption for the council, then we would be able to answer all the questions that she's brought up that would have to be addressed. But I think tonight we could comfortably take these and, and move them. Maybe if there's a different word she wants, but I think resolution is correct when you look it up and see what it really means. But we should adopt a resolution to move forward on these. The final document will certainly be written differently, but it will incorporate these, these items. And it's, it's us making a commitment to move forward and really see some action. It's going to go very slow anyways, but we got to start. So I would, I would recommend doing that with the, with the understanding, which I have at this point, that as Rachel has said, there's a lot of other things that have got to be asked and worked into here. But this is what we're going to do eventually. And we got to start now. Thank you.
Want to make sure I didn't skip anybody. Counselor Franco, we can, oh, let me see. Counselor Bordelon. Counselor Franco had her hand up first, then Counselor Bordelon. So this is second time for both.
I appreciate your comment and just want to ask if you could call me Counselor Franco, as I call all of you as by counselor as well.
I beg your pardon. Oh, I'm sorry. I will correctly address you.
So we were elected and we are the legislative body. And our responsibilities are to make legislation and to pass things for the town that are in their best interest. I don't think making a resolution. And as it's been stated before, there are times where as a consensus, we could just say, we agree with this and we can move forward and work on it. And maybe there is an issue here as a resolution, because if you're making it, you're adopting a resolution and with basically no real direction. And there is a lot more to discuss and to deal with going forward. So I don't see that there's a need for this resolution right now, as stated. I have seen decisions being made by the council to just do things without the full explanations and directions and goals and setting all these standards. And then it just leads to more confusion later on. So instead of just trying to make a resolution saying we're going to put climate change, resiliency and sustainability as a central organizing, planning, management principle for all actions in the town government. So you're saying every, by passing this, and you're saying that every action in this town government has to be, those three things have got to be part of it. So be careful what you're doing here without guidance, goals, directions, or anything else in setting a standard for something. So I have an issue with it and I think it's premature. I think it was just hastily put up there. And I personally do not think it's appropriate that we do this at this moment. If you want to have a consensus to move forward to work towards these, I would be right on board with everybody. But I don't think passing this sweeping general statement is going to help us as a council create, get anything actually accomplished. Thank you.
We have Counselor Bordelon for your second time.
Actually, to clarify, my question was in regards to when we were first asked to pick one, I didn't speak since you made a resolution. This is my first time speaking on that.
Go ahead.
Just clarifying that. I guess, Mike, I'm in full support of this. I guess, what does it mean? I guess, John, town manager, how would this make and propel the town forward? What are the things? How do we push this tonight, which I'm in full support of all the detail that are explained, but the fine combing and altering of it? What other things are in this that can be used? And by doing this, is this something that every town council moving forward has to utilize? Or could they just bypass this? How strong is this? So I guess I have a couple of questions for the town manager.
Well, any resolution, it really only carries weight while that council's in there. It can be altered at any time. I would look at this sort of like we were looking at the, the transit one we've talked about transit where it's guiding principles. You know, I think you're not bound by it, but you should be looking at each of these three items and any project you do, consider them. And I don't think it binds you to anything. I think it's just good to, you know, it's good direction.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that because that's the way I was understanding it. And I was just kind of not sure if that would help Counselor Franco at all because I hear her concerns. I'm in support of this, obviously. I've always been in support of sustainability and resilience and making sure the environment and our health is really important to me. So this is more of a philosophy and an idea that's being carried, which I'm trying to pull Rachel into it a little bit or help clarify if I can. But I mean, they won't. But just to, it's like saying, I'm going to wake up today and I'm going to do this, this and this. And it's just a way or a thought process that's carried. It's a guiding tool. And I think it speaks volumes. And then from there, we can use to dive in even deeper by getting, you know, hiring that sustainability person on board and getting grants and doing those types of things. But first, we have to speak the talk and walk the walk. And I think this gets us in that mindset is the way that I'm understanding. It's not binding in any ways, even though I'd like it to be, but it's not binding in the sense that things can't be added or redirected at that time. So those are my questions I had for town manager, and I would have to say I'm in full support of it. I think we, we as a, as a town, I know I ran on sustainability, resilience and, and it was, it was really important to me to make sure that this town from its health, also volunteering with the Leg light Health District. I, I think there's, there's a lot of important issues here and I think this is definitely a motto that I can stand behind and look forward to support and flourish and see where we can add and improve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kelly, did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment to the, just as we went on this sort of listening tour of the last year of talking to many of the different department heads, a lot of them did make the point to us that having a resolution or a policy by the town that stated an affirmation that they wanted an organizing principle around sustainability and resilience was important. And so we're, we actually brought this forward on behalf of, you know, people that are working in the power, you know, plant in the water facility in the health district. I mean, it, it was something that they considered important for the town.
Thank you. Okay, I'm trying to see where I left off. I think I have Counselors Zepary and then I'm on the list and then Counselor Heed and then Bum Gardner. Counselors Zepary, I can't see you now. Where are you? Do you wish to speak again? Yes?
Yeah, just a minute. I don't have much to say, but I think this resolution is very important. First of all, we've had excellent report from the, from this task force. And we are aware that we have an important problem to face. To make it a central issue as we consider other things does not mean that it will be the only issue that we consider when we consider other needs of the town. But it will be something that we should look at and decide how much weight we're going to put on it in making each individual decision. So it's not something that shapes and determines each of our next decision, but it does shape and determine our resolve to consider this and to keep it as a priority consideration. I also think it's important to pass a resolution because this, this discussion has been very fruitful. And at the end of the discussion, if we do not pass a resolution, we might as well not have passed all the gas because it doesn't make any difference what we chatter about. If we don't come to some kind of decision of direction, then we might as well not have had the discussion. So I would, I, I think this resolution is important. I think we should go through it and we should affirm it and and use it as guidance for future actions and hopefully for future councils. Thank you.
We will, I'll hold off on my turn. Counselor Heed and then Bum Gardner.
Okay, so Counselor Franco raised a good question. What exactly does a resolution mean? So I think, you know, everybody here is kind of tuned it up a little bit, but if I could throw, I want to throw it back to John again. My understanding is that it would be just sort of another hoop that if you're buying light bulbs, now you have to ask the question, are these more energy efficient light bulbs? Not are they just the cheapest ones kind of thing? Like on a practical level, would this, would this positively impact the town, you know, to, to come out in the direction that we're looking at? Like when we're writing new zoning laws or approving new developments or anything like that? Is it, basically I understand it is, we're just another question we're asking. It's not like legislation where we're saying you are bound by this.
Correct. Yeah, I think it's very important to ask those things for any major project. Now, if we're going to get down to the micro level of buying light bulbs and stuff, we're going to have to account for that in the budget too. So we're going to have to keep that in mind. But yeah, I think it's very good to have these in place.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Okay, Counselor Bum Gardner, if you wish to speak again?
Yes, briefly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I stand in support of this resolution. I think Sarah brought up a very excellent point, you know, and personally, and in some ways, I, I think starting the conversation is the most difficult. And especially here in, in Groton, you know, and especially in mine time and public service. You know, I remember when discussing issues of climate change would sort of fall on the back burner. And I think in many ways over the last few years, we've demonstrated that there is widespread interest to talk about these, these challenges that will confront our communities and for the years to come. And there's again, much interest in these issues. So really the next step is leading. And we lead through resolution and establishing a climate change or climate action as a guiding principle for everything we do here in the community. And I think, again, considering, you know, whether you factor the 20 and sea level rise by 2050 or the need to decarbonize, you know, our transportation sector, you know, as Zell is working on, you know, at the state level, you know, to ensure that we shift away from the, you know, personal motor vehicle, vehicle use and start using public transportation. These are all things that go hand in hand. And in, you know, after, again, we establish those guiding principles, we then rebuild our infrastructure. We invest in the coastal resilience. And so we cannot do so without those guiding principles. So what the mayor has outlined, I think, is a great framework and a great starting point. We can work out the details at, at another time. And that's where I think a lot of that, the fun will be had because, because of the, the work over the last 16 months done by the task force, meeting with department heads, various organizations and partners of ours, you know, that fact finding will be critical. And that research will be critical to actually tackle again, the challenges ahead. So I don't want to belabor this issue. We still have a more climate action to talk about with respect to open space later on this evening and, you know, establishing an open space plan, which again, goes hand in hand with this work. So I, I, you know, hope our, this, our council, you know, strongly supports this resolution tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Counselor Bordelon, is your hand up? Yes.
I had a quick question.
Go for it.
I'm not sure who, it would be John, the town manager or someone from the, the task force. How much funding would one need to really start to get this off the ground when we start talking about looking at the grants and such? Where do we, with the budget season upcoming, where do we need to start targeting that amount to be at? Where's a good, a good spot to be, to be in striking range to be able to start to get those types of competitive grants? Thank you.
Well, I think we're on track with adding the resilience person. So funding, that's number one. And then we also put in a CIP to have some funds for a resilience plan. So I think those are good starts there. And then that person can help us start identifying grants and what we might need for matching dollars.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I will call for a vote on the resolution. To make, I make a motion to adopt a resolution addressing climate change, resiliency and sustainability as a central organizing, planning and management principle for all actions of the town government. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Is that unanimous?
Whoa.
It looks like we, we, we might be at seven counselors. Are we at seven counselors?
Can't tell. It looks like we might be missing.
We're missing Rachel. Counselor Franco.
So we are dropped to seven counselors at the time of the vote and it was unanimous, seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. All right. So Mr. Stever and your, your group, we will be looking to you to help us adopt that or write that resolution. So thank you so much. I appreciate all your time.
Madam Mayor, should we wait to see if there was a possibility that she dropped off or?
And the vote is done. We're, we're set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
And the council, I'd like to thank you all very much. This is a great move forward that you've made. And we'll be working with, with you all and with John Burt to, to bring this to fruition. And thank you.
Have a good night.
Guys, really appreciate it.
We really appreciate your, your energy. Yes. We are on to 2021 111 Open Space Conservation Plan Presentation. This is on page 34. And we do have a motion on this and I'm trying to remember. Counselor Melendez, did you read the last one? Are we on to Counselors Zepary or is it your turn?
I think I read the last one, but I can read this one as well.
Thank you.
Okay, 34. I make a motion to accept the Conservation Commission's 2020 Open Space Conservation Plan for Groton, Connecticut.
Bum Gardner.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Bum Gardner. Thank you very much. Mr. Dunn, are you going to take the lead on this?
Yes, I will. Thank you. All right. Well, I, I think as was pointed out, I think by Counselor Bum Gardner, that the, the conservation plan actually has a significant overlap with what you just heard on Sustainability Task Force. It's not as encompassing. It's a subset, but we go a lot more into the weeds with specific actions and we'll get into it. What I would like to start with, let me go back to the first page, is the first, you know, thank is the first, you know, thank the, the Conservation Commission members and all the reviewers. It's over two years that came out with a plan that, that you've have approved. So appreciate that at the beginning. What we're going to go through today is focus on several aspects of the, of the plan. Not all of it, because there's a lot of details in the plan. But we want to talk about the parcel analysis that was done and also the outreach program that we've got. And one of the things that occurred to me as we went through the, the last presentation is I'm going to offer the, the website to the Sustainability Task Force because there is a, it's a way of getting communication out to the, to the public. Excuse me. What I would like to do is just remind everyone of the responsibilities given to the Conservation Commission by the town. And it's the three items listed there or highlighted there. And the, the plan as you've just approved is really provides a recommendation on development expansion use of open space in the, in the pound. I mean, that's, that's the specific that's in there. As part of that, we've put together a, a process and a methodology that we, we will, you have used and will continue to use as a standard practice for any Conservation Commission actions that we take on and that, in fact, you know, you ask us to do.
You have one minute, Mr. Dunn? Mr. Dunn, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Councilor Melendez, is your hand up from the last item? Or did you have something you needed to say right now?
No, no, I was just, I have a question for them after they're done with their presentation.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if I missed it. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn. Go ahead.
Oh, no, no problem. One of the things, I think we, so far, we've done nine specific properties and that's been inputted to, you know, the planning staff and department and, and sometimes at public hearings. And we're going to spend most of the time sharing on the first two items that's on the, on the document. So, oops, I think I went. So from a status, we were here back in August in terms of a status report. Since that time, we did hold a public hearing. We did, we did get comments and inputs, which were incorporated into the plan. I would say nothing substantive. And one of the things that, one of the sections of the plan is 49 very specific recommendations. And we'll kind of talk about a summary of that later on in terms of who does what to whom and how those actions go forward. What I would like to do and the, a number of the commission members are here. And I would like to turn it over to, to Tom to take it to the next areas and talk about the priorities. So Tom?
Yes, I'd like to thank the town counselors here for having us come back. If you remember last August, we went through the, you know, the entire plan and what the goals are and everything. I just wanted to refresh. On the, on the key item that came out of the, is our whole section regarding establishing of seven priorities. These are completing of our proposed green belts. I've got them laid out here in this graphic here on this page to basically focus on where we should be going with future procurements and, and placement of, of lands into a protected status. This would be jointly between the town as well as with this, working with the state, such as at Candlewood Hill and working with both Avalonia and the Groton Open Space Association and their private land trust, as well as the PA 490, the forest and farmlands areas to put those into a reduced tax status. So in establishing these corridors, these would be both for wildlife as well as for, for personal hiking and stuff, which we've seen a major increase in during the time of, of the COVID here this past year. We've also established our second priority regarding our coastline and taking, identifying those vulnerable areas. And then also, thirdly, the natural resources and drinking waters and working closely with ground utilities relative to establishing their future areas, particularly up in the northeast section of the town. Working on our next page, on the, we talk about the woodlands and carbon sequestration during the clear cuttings examples and stuff. Our preservation of that native flora and fauna is a major area. We've got some very critical items, such as this last summer, we identified things as the Watchrose property. There's a grant, open space grant that the town proved to go, submit into the state. We're still awaiting their decision on that. But that was principally driven by the native fauna and flora in that area. And then also our natural heritage resources, working with the national, the Heritage Trust as what the state did for the Candlewood Hill areas. And this has also been supported by the Groton Open Space and their acquisition grants. And then lastly, on the next page is the seventh priority is our natural outdoor resources as far as supporting the hiking trails and identifying those areas, working with Parks and Recs. And this has been very closely, as we've been trying to come up with how we go forward in a stewardship areas and also for what procurements are needed to improve on, on this area. So on the next page, and I'll let Larry, go back to Larry in regard to what areas that we've gone into, onto outreach.
Thanks, Tom. One of the major comments we got back was a lot of information, perhaps too much for the general public to absorb. And what could we do to make it more understandable, relatable? And to really get across the, the, you know, the purpose and the value of open space? So we took that to heart, although we did say the purpose was to provide a detailed resource so that it can be referred to. And there's a lot of live links, et cetera, to get back to the source documentation that, you know, that Tom inserted and the team inserted into the document. One of the things then we did do is create an abridged version of the open space plan. It's the 80/20 rule. So instead of the 100-page document, it's a 20-page document that provides a shortened version, you know, for highlights of the plan. So that is now available. The second thing that we, we are doing is creating a video series. We're talking about three minutes of the value of open space. And it, it matches the value statements in the plan. The first video is out there, which is focuses on the health benefits. And that's on a GMTV channel that's dedicated to conservation. And I guess I thank Sean Greeley and the, the staff that provided support to get that up and running. One of the other, other items currently under development is the King Colton Maskey Community Project. And that's one where it shows and we're going to do more of a, of a doc, documentary about the value of the community, working with the town Parks and Recs Department to actually get an open space created, get trails done, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, as, as a great example of that, that says what other, in other parts of the town, could that be done when you have local community gather together and provide an exercise? So we, we were working on that. And after that, we're working on the, you know, as wetlands as the next value statement. Now, one of the things that we did do is to create a Conservation Commission website. And I would thank John Burt and John Reiner for supporting, getting this set up. And so this will have a focal point of finding things about conservation that quite frankly, was kind of hard to find things in the, you know, on the website and it's buried in an agenda someplace. And the three, on the terms of news things, that the three things is obviously the plans out there. Then buried in here would be the abridged version. The open space inventory, which we're going to get to in a second. And for, you know, the, the third one was a NIP survey that was just completed and a memo was sent to the town council on that. What I would like to then, whoops, let me go down one more, is the other thing we're doing on outreach program is over the last year, we made a, an effort to not be independent. There's a lot, it's a very active conservation community within the town with, with a variety of folks working on it. And may I fact, one of the things on the website is we kind of link those all together so you can see who's doing what to whom. But these are a couple of examples of working with GOSSA on, on some land acquisition they're doing. GCA initiated the NIPS, you know, the effort on legislation, which we then supported with a survey. And we, we're also participating with other agencies in terms of their activities we're doing. Quick highlight is, one of the things that we found is that the, I guess, the, the younger generation, there is a great interest in conservation that was certainly not there, you know, when I was at school. But right now, the School of Business, for example, they've agreed to support the town and work and improve the conserva, the economic model that we put together as one of their senior capstone projects. But the, the, the point of, of that is that conservation is no longer the sidebar and was discussed in the last, last session with the climate change. Almost all the, the schools, whether it's engineering or business, et cetera, they all have a focus or just trying to figure out how climate, how conservation relates to the activities they're doing. So it's kind of an interesting movement that would make it actually easier to execute and implement the, you know, the proposal, the, what you've just passed in your, your last proposal. What I would like to then shift gears a little bit and get into the nitty gritty and talk about one of the specific areas of doing the inventory and showing where we are in that, in that session. So let me turn that back over to Tom to talk about the specifics and the details available on our parcel analysis. So back to your time.
Thank you. As we've gone through, we have a requirement as, as part of our charter with, for the commission is to make sure there's, we have a complete inventory of all's open spaces. And what we found in doing that is that we really haven't taken a look at each parcel that we thought was open space. Does it match up and, and, and show up having actual protection in the deed? So what we've done is we've gone in and basically taken all the properties that we feel have been, you know, of, of, in the town. We've got identified 418 parcels that look like they're open space, either from the town ownership, the city ownership, state or the private, such as the GOSSA Avalonia, et cetera, as well as the PA 490 items. And that, I've got the breakdown here as far as who owns what in regard to the number of parcels and stuff. And then we've, and the number of acreage, and this has all been, we've actually, there's been some improvement in these areas from what was in the inventory that was in the P O C D. And then on the next page, we took a little bit about the, the analysis that we did and take a look at, taking a look at the, how much of the focusing in on the 183 parcels that are considered protected, older parcels as, as open space was investigated. We found that of those in our research and thing, taking a look and actually pulling the deeds out, working out with the town clerk's office, that there's 34 parcels are still silent on deed restrictions. And this principally do that they were so old. It is parcels where we, where the town received properties back in the 1950s. We put in like, good examples, the Clonak Bridge area, where all the, the park, the bridge walkway area there, that was deeded to the, to the town back in the 1950s. We've got a beautiful parkway there, but it is, it is considered open space because it has some facilities, it's been facilities around it. And so these are the type of things, but we, we need to go back and take a look at, how do we protect these in the future? Because the deeds, we never really went through the deed protection process. So on the next page, we kind of, we've identified 21 parcels as of right now that are greater than three acres that are, and that we, we agree with Parks and Recs that need some type of stewardship oversight to, to them. And we're going to work as far as with the, the town staff here in regard to how to get the deed protection in place, work with Parks and Recs and how to get the stewardship put in place. We're basically focusing on, on parcels, there are three acres or greater. This is based on, there's a state statute that in regard to, that talks to the size of the, of parcels, for open space parcels greater than three acres have, have to have certain requirements with them. Less than three acres, there's a lot less to worry about because they're so small in regard to the, the public good and stuff in regard to what our focus is right now. Ultimately, we, if we get everything fixed in the, greater than three acres, then we'll start to work at, at less than that. But there's a number, a greater number of those that are the smaller parcels in regard to, are they truly true open space? And that's one of the areas that we still have to come through. So we still have a lot of work in this area, a lot of deeds to go. We still got 21 parcels that are, that we're going to be working with to get the deed fixed per se, to get it identified that the protection is that this is open space. And so we'll be working that in the future. And the next page there, so we'll, we'll, then we'll also work with the Parks and Recs in regard to how do we establish stewardship? Obviously for, this Parks and Recs has a number of, of, up their parks, you know, that they have people out there mowing them and, and taking care of them. But there's also a number of, of parcels that are out there that need some support that haven't, there have just been vacant lots per se. We don't know what, what the status of those things are. We need to be working and coming up with a plan in, in, in some way or shape to come up with a, whether it be an ordinance or, or a decision with the Parks and Recs, whatever. But we'll be working with them. And one of the things that we're finding out right now is that working with the Parks and Rec Commission, as they've been going through their certification process for the National Recreation Park Association accreditation, is that they need to have some type of better framework. And so we will, will be working with them to get cooperation in regard to, and through our, our follow-on activities here, as we put the open space plan together, we're also working this year with an open space stewardship workbook that'll basically put together a lot of the specifics of how to go and take care of parcels that are not a park, but there are just open space similar to what GOSSA does and what Avalonia does with their parcels in regard to maintaining the trails, maintaining boundary walks and, and those type of things that are basically processes that are established by the Land Trust Alliance, which is a nationally recognized organization in regard to how to maintain and, and, and steward your open space properties. So we'll be taking that on over the course of this next year. On the next page, these are all, you know, the actions that both Larry and I have talked about above are part of the last 49 items that we're, that we focused in on. However, we, we'd like to take a look at some of the items that now, that the town council, that we're going to be coming to you looking for support in the future. And a couple of these items that are in the, in the plan that we're going to focus in on here that really have required town council and they should be aware of is completions of green belts, which is, which require your support in future parcel acquisition and applications to the state, whether it be the CIP funding in the open space acquisition, for the open space acquisition, which is part of the budgetary process that you've been reviewing over the last few years, which is originally initiated through the P O C D actions. The Ozwa Grants, similar to what you did this past August in regard, in July for, for the Noah Ledger Road Parcel. And then also, you, you've also went back in 2019, approved a submission for the green, for upgrading the green belts to the greenways. We need to still follow up and make that happen. And then also pursuing Greenway integration through the SECOG to both to New London and to Ledger and potentially Stonington. Those are all actions that will probably be coming back to you in the future. But we want you to be aware of that those, this whole area is in, in the plan. And then the next page, as the other area is, is maintain the forest canopy. There's potential here as Office of Planning and Development should investigate subdivision regulations and zoning regulations to, to take a look at how we handle the trees as far as from a carbon sequestration aspects of it to make sure that we're, or in, in doing best developments and also for identification of additional areas of where we could be having offsets if for clear cutting, like we did for the middle school replanting. We had some of that replanting happen over in Sutton Park area. The Parks and Rec has coordinated, but we need to take a look, look at this and a more, a more global aspect and also potentially transitioning some of the PA 490 protected open space areas also. So these are, these are the two major areas right now that we're looking for. Towns, council support, you should be aware that those are in the plan. That's why we wanted to highlight those to you tonight as you give your approval to the plan here. Thank you very much. We're subject to your. Thank you very much. We're subject to your questions at this time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Counselor Melendez, I'm trying to see, there you are. Counselor Melendez, you wanted to ask a question, correct?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this. I love the plan. I'm sure that when you come back later with your bullet points asking for support, I'll be in support of all those things as well. I do have a question. I know the state has sort of this goal in mind where they want to protect about 20 or 21% of land in the state. And I, I've heard that Groton is, has met that or is close to meeting it, very close either way. But when I think of, when I think of like the state, you know, towns like Hartford and New Haven are not going to reach that 20%. So there's going to have to be other towns that go higher than that percent. So is there sort of like, do you guys have an idea of where Groton needs to be in terms of percentage of protected lands that we're in a good spot?
Yeah, I think it's, you are correct is that we're at a, the 21% based upon how you count open space. But you know, you're also correct, matter of fact, the plan does state that we really need to overachieve because of other areas, but also be very specific. Two areas of specificity that are in the plan and number one, complete the greenways. All right. So that, those are very narrow corridors and very specific properties there. And the second one is what was talked about earlier is we're going to have future marshlands as the water rises. So you got to reserve that land, if you will. So when it does rise, there's not a building there, is it all possible, but we can retain the marshlands. So those are two, you know, as examples, those are two specific areas or targeted areas versus, you know, a major percentage. So it's, it's really not a percentage per se. We're really at targeting a specific objectives. Tom, do you want to add anything to that answer?
No, I think the only point I would make is, you know, that you are correct by the total open space in Groton. Everyone includes things through the, the Groton reservoir systems, the state owned properties and municipal, you know, as well as the private ownership from Gosa and et cetera. And so we are at the 21% total open space within the town, which reflects what the state goal is. So if you say, as the state goes, Groton goes, we're, we're supporting that. We're, we're right there. But if, as far as we're trying to offset other areas, could we be higher? Yes. Are there opportunities there to be higher to support our, our greenways? Cause we do have opportunities to help the state out here in a lot of areas and we should be supporting those. And I think that's really the goal of what we're trying to do with this plan is to have those opportunities, identify those parcels and to work with the state to take, when that opportunity comes, such as the, what you, the town council approved this past July, the resolution to go forward with, to support, looking at the, at the Watrous property on Noick Leger Road is a good example of where we would continue to get, get opportunities there for, for continuation of the open space procurements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Counselor Heed, you wish to speak?
I think your hand's up.
Yes, thank you. Throw it over my hands. Yeah. So in your report, you suggest that the town should be funding open space acquisition. Maybe you don't have the number, but I'm curious, like, would there be a consistent number? You would be recommending that we invest over a certain period of time. You've identified the properties, the greenways, the interconnections that we need to work on. I mean, I think it was in 1990, there was a bond referendum, right? For $8 million. Is there something like that that you're recommending that we go forward? Or is it just annually you put in like 200,000 or 50,000 or something? And over a certain period of time, you start acquiring, you know, you pick up a property here and there. Like what's the, what would be your suggestion to accomplish those goals?
One of the things that the CIP, as I mentioned in the earlier, in the, in the P O C D, there was a recommendation to put, establish a CIP for open space acquisition. In the, in your previous budgets that have, that the county council has acted upon, you have set aside $25,000 per year to be putting aside, starting this coming year. Okay. So what we're looking for is to have that actually go into effect. You've been putting the budget there with a start of, for that FYE 22 budget. So we would be looking for you to actually come through and, and put that number up as previously proposed. So you've been planning for it and now this is the first year it's actually going to be in the, it should be in the budget based on your, on the prior actions. And so if you're looking for the number for this coming year, it'd be the 25,000. And that would be then supplementing the around 75,000, $100,000, $75,000 that are, that we've been accumulating through the property sales. There's a fund that gets established and also for offsets from, from part of, from where realtors come in and, or developers come in and give us offsets rather than setting aside an open space area. There's funds that go in there that has currently around 75,000 in it. And so this would be building, starting to build that fund when that gets, and then the opportunities come along. We're not proposing anything as well as what was done back in 1988 with the $8 million open space fund. We recognize that the town really got a lot from that. And so we don't see right now the need for that type of massive bonding issue or anything like that. So we're looking for the accumulation and then continuing looking for opportunities as they appear to, and working, but focusing in, and that's why the plan's set up so that we can focus in along the greenways is our primary way of keeping our focus in what properties be monitoring for, for potential purchase and or coordination through either working with the private connections or with the state in regard to establishing those greenways. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'd like to add that from a funding point of view, that's viewed more as seed money to go after grants and also to work with the, the conservation elements within the town, you know, for raising money specifically for, for properties, which has been very successful with, with Gosa and Avalonia over the, over the last year. So it's, it's not intended to say, take some money and go buy a property just with that money, but use that as leverage. Right? So I don't know, Bray, you've, you've, you've seen this from both angles. Anything you'd like to add?
No, I agree that many years ago, when that $8 million bonding issue came forth, we didn't have active groups like Gosa and Avalonia going after their own properties. So as we look at open space within the town, we're not looking to say because of the town has to own it. We're looking to identify important ecological places and protecting them for the future, whether they're wetlands, salt marshes. But one of the best ways to protect them is to own them. And it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be the town. But in our plan, we're trying to finish up these green break locations and looking at a diversity of funding to find protections, whether going to the state, looking for funding through them, or having sister working with Avalonia, Gosa in the future.
Thank you. I don't remember who had the floor. Was it Counselor Heed who had the floor?
Yes, well, I asked my question and they've been answering it. So.
All right. So we have Counselor Baumgartner's of Perry and Bordelain. Counselor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just like to thank the Conservation Commission for their diligent work over the last, I would say, at least a year or so developing this plan. This is some, just a plan that, you know, I, it was mentioned earlier tonight, I'm sorry, it's been a long meeting tonight. But you know, this Conservation Commission is composed of a group of volunteers. And this report was done in a way that just, it's a, quite a professional report. So really hats off to, to everyone involved for your, your research and, and really laying out a blueprint for the future, but also highlighting what the town has accomplished with respect to protecting open space. So you know, it is, we are already leading by example. You know, as mentioned in the, in the report, over 20% of, of land is protected as open space, whether it's, you know, a combination of municipal privately owned land and utility land. So you know, we are already going in the right direction. Obviously we don't want to go backwards, but we have the foundation and let's keep growing it. So my question, I have a few questions. Someone tonight mentioned an emphasis on protecting land in sort of the northeast quadrant of Groton. A few years back, if I recall, and I think this was in the report, the National Fish and Wildlife Service designated Groton and a few other surrounding municipalities as the area encompassing the Great Thicket, Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge. And my question is, is any commission member aware of developments with, that, or aware of what other municipalities are doing? Whether it's partnering with the federal government to identify key parcels within that zone that could be acquired by the federal government? And so how can we as a town better partner with, you know, our federal, federal partners to protect, you know, land within that zone so we can start, you know, start sort of our, doing our due diligence on, on that front?
This is Tom Wilson. The Great Thicket, you know, it has been established by the, as you mentioned, it's a federal project. It's been in the northern part of Groton as well, as well as most of Legerd and Stonington and North Stonington in particular are, is part of, and this then goes all the way into Rhode Island and up into, continues up into, into the rest of New England. And it's basically focused on the New England cotton tails, rabbit. And there have been locations identified within Groton, up in the northern east portion of it, similar to the areas where the, where these utilities is, I mean, with Groton Utilities is looking at for, also for, for better protection. And right now, they, they, I'm not aware of any activity where somebody says, hey, I want to come in and, and take this over. We have not had any discussions. I know that's been fairly limited because of the federal government actions over the, during the past administration, there was a little bit less emphasis on these type of areas. And at this time, we're not aware of any actions that, for procurements that are being handled under the Great Thicket. I know that there, if you come up with, particularly if you have known that no wildlife species on your property, that's the biggest driver to getting the funding. And we just have not ident, I'm not aware of anybody that's identified anything and has pursued that funding at this time.
And, and by and large, just the actions the town has taken in, in recent years, you know, I think constructive criticism is okay. I, I think it, it goes without saying, this council has very much prioritized the issues of protecting open space and environmental stewardship, you know, without, you know, very much highlighted these issues. And we've been champions for these issues in comparison to, you know, perhaps even councils past. And so, you know, with that said, is there, are there any immediate actions the town can take to, you know, better protect existing land or, you know, or pending decisions upon the horizon, things that we should be aware of to, you know, to ensure that we continue to be great stewards or, and better stewards of our, our public lands? Outside of obviously the recommendations you've made of, you know, and maybe even, maybe this would be a good segue into, you know, selling us on, on potentially passing an open space ordinance, which I'm, I'm in full support.
There's, there's several actions and I will say out of the 49, I think we've, we've accepted 25 for ourselves as our own actions. And, and some of those are in fact, yes, it was mentioned earlier, there was a number of parcels that we reviewed without protections, even though we own them. So ensuring those protections are there and we will be coming forward with a generic protection statement that applies to them in bulk, right? So we'll be coming back to you with that once we get that work done. The other item in terms of stewardship, as Tom mentioned earlier, that we went through and had, you know, lengthy discussions with, with Mark Berry on, on what was required and decided that looking at the content of what an ordinance might be and what, what was required through that accreditation, that we felt it would be better, it would be easier to accomplish by doing it with a, you know, the open space stewardship workbook, which would pair with Parks and Recs and we can do it without having a specific ordinance and all the legalities and reviews, et cetera, that would be required for that. So I think that could be done through the normal administrative process that, you know, that the town manager owns as, as well as the staff. Tom, did I hit all the answers to his question?
I think you did.
Thank you.
Oh, you're on mute.
Madam Mayor, how am I doing on time?
You're out of time. You're first around, you're out of time. We can come back if you have further questions. We are at 10:20, guys. Counselors of Perry and Counselor Bordelain.
I'll be very brief. I, I think, I think the report is excellent. I think it has a lot of information in it. I hope you're putting it on your website so that people can find it when they're searching for information on, in this area. And it kind of complete with keywords that can be indexed and readily located. It's, it's a valuable resource for Groton. I think it should be on our website, not only as a part of our agenda, but it should be on our website as a separate report that people can access and, and consider when they, even students who are writing reports or other people that have an interest in what's happening in Groton. Likewise, I think the report that we received from the Resiliency and Sustainability Task Force should be on our website as a separate report, not simply as a matter of our agenda. So that it similarly, it was, it was a superb report with a lot of, a well thought out ideas that should be accessible to people who want to research this. And that's all I wanted to comment about. I, I hope we can move forward with, with making this information publicly available and easily available.
Yeah, thank you. And that's precisely why the website was set up. And the document is a standalone document that people can get at, as well as we pulled out and had the action list, those 49 actions as a separate document. So transparency, you say, how well are we doing against the actions that were in the plan? As well as the inventory, which you saw a small slice of it. So all 400 and, I'm forgetting now, 418, the parcels, they're there in a, in a sheet where you can actually access all the deed, et cetera. And all the references are also hyperlinks so you can get to it. So yes, the intent was to do just that. And I took an action from, from your, well, your comment earlier is I'll offer it as hell to put, to use that site as a, providing, putting his document out there if, if he would, if he would agree to do that.
I would like to have both of them on our town website as well, but.
But it is on the town website.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Bordelain.
Thank you. It's a very thorough presentation and a lot of, lot of information. Definitely a resource I will keep around to reference from time to time for sure. So I appreciate the effort that you guys put into it. Looking, I want to also say I do utilize a lot of your trails. So I appreciate the effort that you guys put into it. Um, looking, I want to also say I do utilize a lot of your trails and find them to be very wonderful. Definitely an increase of traffic out there during COVID with folks, you know, utilizing all the different open space areas. So it's a really great asset to have. Um, looking at the town as a whole and looking at the city parameters, do you, how much city effort and collaboration are you guys doing to obtain any parcels of land or open space? I think it's really important that in our urban areas that they have equal access to open space. I know the city community with a very diverse population, um, you know, the walkability to be able to access open space and trails. I know at the Catherine Kolnowski, they are starting to do work over there. So that's, that's a new effort. But is there any push to really bridge into the, the city side to really collaborate and expand the great things you guys have done in other parts of the town? So that's my question.
I'm gonna, before you answer, please, Counselor Aubrey, do you have to leave us?
Yes.
Okay. So it is 10:24. We will be at six counselors. That still is a quorum. So we can continue. Thank you. Good night, Counselor Aubrey. I'm sorry, Counselor Bordelain.
That's all right.
Uh, this is Tom Olson. As far as into answering the counselor's question in regard to working with the city, I think you need to recognize that the city of Groton has its own Conservation Commission. That Groton Long Point has their own Conservation Commission. And then the town takes up all, and our Conservation Commission takes those, is not really covering those two areas. We tried our best in working with both of those other conservation commissions to incorporate their concerns into our overall plan for the town. But as far, and that's come, one of the things that we did with, for, for example, is with the, we took a look at what the green belts were in the P O C D. We noticed that they really didn't try to get over into, into the Groton city or, or, and everything. So we did try to, and we expanded into, in, through the city to get connections over to New London is one good example. As far as trying to take a look at this and also taking a look at some of the areas with the Kolonowski area being right on the border with the, with the city as far as trying to improve on that. And, and also with, and then we recognized working with the Sparkle Lake area and trying to get some type of coordination in there as far as in a future land acquisitions and, and trail development. That's one of the areas that we are working with, with the city as far as our, coming in from the town side as far as those opportunities. But we, we, it was a little distressing when we did, I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, but the, the, when, I personally went to the Groton City Conservation Commission and they freely admitted that they are about 99% focused on inland wetland issues because they are a joint commission with inland wetlands and conservation. And, and, but, and so it's, it's really a little tough on our side in regard to, we're not going to be going, it's to go in and say, we want to go procure areas inside the city. We basically said that's their responsibility as a conservation commission. Likewise down at Groton Long Point, they already have a very, you know, established percentage wise of Groton Trail system and Groton Long Point. An active conservation commission that's dedicated to maintaining their conservation areas in the, in the, in the central portions of Groton Long Point. So, uh, you know, I, I don't really know how to say other than we have made attempts to, to coordinate with the other commissions and, and, and provide opportunities to expand into those areas on the borders where we do intersect with them. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that elaborate answer. And I, I think it, it is very helpful to understand. I think sometimes people forget. And it's good to explain when looking at this, that there is three separate entities and how, how those all operate differently. And, um, but from the town side, I think you guys do a great job and offer a great product and, and definitely a lot of resource to, to utilize. So I, I, I look forward to continuing to support you guys. You definitely have my support and moving forward, would love to talk with you folks on a different level and maybe head out and volunteer some time and see firsthand on the trail. So thank you for all that you guys do.
Take that note.
Yes, yes. I want to get outside more.
And just speaking of the King Kolnaski property, thanks to Counselor Heed, he's been working on that, right? Literally in his backyard to blaze the trail back there. So thank you. Any other first time speakers? If not, Counselor Baumgartner, I think had another question. Counselor Baumgartner, did you wish to speak again?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. It's more of a comment. I believe the governor, also was mentioned earlier tonight. The governor has a proposed bill addressing, uh, you know, climate, climate change adaptation. And a, a component of that bill is how to allocating funds to pay for open space. And I believe in the proposed bill, it allows municipalities to set, to create a set aside through a conveyance fee or, or can, conveyance tax similar to what the town receives already through real estate transactions. And that fee could go towards open space acquisition. I don't believe there has been a public hearing yet on that. So for folks who are interested, when that, it comes, when the, the bill is raised in the environment committee, you know, I would implore folks to testify at that committee in support of that legislation because there are many components of that bill that I, I think would be beneficial to, to our, you know, our, to, to the town of Groton with respect to conservation. And in, also I think it was Tom that noted that we can utilize, you know, such a fee to, 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 as a, a revenue source for future CIPs relating to open space acquisition. So if we're to fund, you know, as Tom mentioned, the CIP line item for, you know, allocate $25,000 annually towards this fund. So we can start building, you know, a, a fund to pay for open space, open space acquisition in the future. You know, I, I think that's something the town ought to explore, especially since, you know, we, it will, it could have a dedicated revenue source. So, um, you know, again, there, these are just ideas to put on the table, nothing set in stone. But I think it ought to be a priority considering, um, you know, our precious lands, um, you know, if, if we do not have the, the resources to protect them, we risk losing them forever. Um, and so, you know, we, we need to have those, you know, again, those are financial resources available and, and saved so that we can ultimately save, save our, our, our lands. So again, thank you for, for your work. And I, I, I look forward to voting to, you know, endorse this, this comprehensive plan and supporting your efforts for the, for the years to come.
All right. Counselor Bordelain?
Thank you. I had another question. I know in your report, I'm just looking at some of the notes. I know it's getting late and we're kind of cramming this in at the end here. So the 6.4.1, the protection of open space by ordinance, that was in the report and you clearly defines, I think it talks about Chester, Connecticut. What would something like this do for our town? You know, what, what, what things would, you know, having a type of ordinance or, you know, something similar, how would that benefit the town of Groton?
This is Tom Olson. The Chester, Connecticut ordinance is very specific in regard to providing regulations and stewardship requirements. So it sets up for, for spaces that are not coordinated by the Parks and Recs Department. Those, there's like some leftover parcels in the town as far as what can happen on those. There's really no regulations. The Parks and Recs Commission can set up regulations for their, for their parcels. However, the town, the Conservation Commission, we are not empowered to go off and set up regulations as far as what can happen. Can you have drones? Can you do, have a party there and all, or you know, what, and, and that type of stuff? So that's really what the, the, the Chester ordinance talks to as regards to who's taking care of the property. They basically set up a steward for the, for those properties. You, if you want to do some special activities, you get a permit from that individual to co-utilize that parcel. And then also it outlines that they, you can't have hang gliders and all this other kind of stuff is outlined in that regulate, that particular ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for explaining that. I have no further question. Thank you.
All right. Everyone's had a chance to speak, so I will call for a vote on 2021 111 Open Space Conservation Plan Presentation. We are at six counselors. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
I just need a point of clarification. We're just voting that we saw the presentation. What are we voting on again? I'm sorry.
You're voting to accept the Conservation Commission's 2020 Open Space Conservation Plan for Groton, Connecticut. All those in favor, again, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with six counselors present. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, Conservation Commission. It was nice to see, nice to see you here. Appreciate you staying with us through this late meeting. And thank you for all your work. You do amazing things as well. We're very fortunate with the volunteers we have in this town. So thank you. Safe travel, Mr. Olson. Have a good night, everybody. It is after 10:00. So we have to, we, we have review of agenda items, other business, and then adjournment. But I need to ask you if you want to take up any other agenda items or other business? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Heed. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with six counselors. It is 10:35 and we are adjourned. Thank you very much. We had a good productive meeting. I appreciate your patience and your energy, guys. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Thank you, Mr. Burt, Mr. Greeley. Have a good night, Mr. Dunn.